Ladies and gentlemen, we are now six minutes past our half hour delay. So I'm going to ask people to go ahead and get started with the Strategic Focus Report, Goal Report, and the meeting managers for this will be Sandy Evans and Ms. McLaughlin, and I will be maintaining the clock. So Ms. Evans.
Ah, yes. Thank you so much, Dr. Presidio and Dr. Zulawaga. Of course, as we know, we had a full presentation at our last board meeting on this report. So I don't know that we need to do anything beyond having a conversation among board members unless, Dr. Presidio, you had more to add from your conversation on last Thursday.
Yes, thank you. I do have a few opening comments, if that'd be okay, probably just two or three minutes, and then we could just get into board discussion and board questions.
Right, and I would just say to board members, be thinking about what questions you have to ask, and give me the high sign if you want me to put you on the list.
All right, thank you very much, and good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to part two of the student success presentation. I appreciated everybody's patience as we went through about a two-hour discussion on Thursday, and that was a long march, I know, through forty-five PowerPoint slides. So it was a long night for all of us. I appreciate your patience, and I thought we had some very good discussion at the end. So we look forward to continuing that today. Just a few things as we start. I wanted to first of all welcome Dr. Zulawaga to the table, obviously, as the lead GRAS member. He's here with us today to provide some additional information that you might have about what the work looks like in our regions and in our schools. And as I said on Thursday night, this report really was a collaborative effort across many departments. And I do want to recognize and thank some folks again, starting with the directors in the Instructional Services Department, all of whom are here today. So any really detailed questions about programs, they would be happy to be involved in. And we also have our partners from the Office of Research and Strategic Improvement. Here, I see Lidi in the back. And again, as I mentioned on Thursday, her team has done a fantastic job, I think, with the new report formats, and really helping people to try to understand a lot of complicated data within the context of what we're doing to improve as a system. So I appreciate her team's collaboration. And I wanted to just recognize, just for a moment, if I could, one of our directors in Instructional Services, Betris Huffman, who's our Director of the Office of Student Testing, who has put in so many hours with her team collecting and helping analyze data, and she even worked over the Mother's Day weekend when I told her not to. I said, anybody who is a mother or has a mother should not be working a Mother's Day weekend. But she didn't listen to me, and she did pull up some additional information that I'm just going to share with you very briefly on a few questions that board members had on Thursday night. So there were some questions about our graduation rates, and you'll remember, we had discussions about declining graduation rates for our Hispanic student group. Other groups were increasing, but our Hispanic groups, the graduation rate had declined from seventy-seven to seventy-four percent. And I had talked a little bit about, you know, the majority of our dropouts in that Hispanic group, seventy-three percent of them are also English learners. And one of our board members asked, what does the graduation rate look like for Hispanic students who are not English learners? And the graduation rate is ninety-three percent. So it's actually one point above the overall division average for Hispanic students who are not English learners. And you'll remember, we had a lot of conversation about the large number of Level One and Two English learners in the twenty-eight cohort. The twenty-eighteen cohort, over fifty percent of the students that dropped out were Level One and Two students. English learners, Level One and Two students comprised more than fifty percent of the students who dropped out in the twenty-eighteen cohort. The other piece that we talked about was the age of those students at entry. So remember, fifty percent of our students who dropped out in that cohort also were between ages sixteen and twenty-two when they enrolled for the first time in Fairfax County. So that's, I think, some important information. And again, just to stress that our Hispanic students who are not English learners are graduating at really high rates. So again, our challenge is to try to figure out, how do we support our English learners to have enough time and enough flexibility to be able to complete high school? The other piece of data that Betris worked on over the weekend was related to some questions that Ms. Schultz was asking about college graduation rates. And first, when thinking about the college graduation rates, and this used to be a metric in the old strategic plan, but it's not one of the current board-approved metrics, the first thing we always look at is, what is the percentage of students who are actually enrolling in college? So we look at the percent of students who are enrolling in the semester immediately following high school, either a two- or a four-year college or university, and seventy-five percent of our students in the most recent dataset enrolled in either a two- or a four-year college the semester after high school graduation. Ninety-three percent of those students then continued into their second year of college. So that's not too bad. That's a pretty good return rate. The problem, as Ms. Schultz pointed out, though, is that it's only sixty percent, and you recalled that correctly, only sixty percent of our students are graduating college in six or fewer years. So that is still the similar data outcome that we've seen in previous reports. And then there were a couple of questions about early childhood and preschool. And remember, the metric that we're going to be using in the strategic plan looks at using the new Virginia Kindergarten Readiness Program assessment, which includes math, it includes literacy, and it also looks at school readiness factors like social, emotional skills, and executive functioning. But that assessment's going to be given for the first time this fall, so we don't have that data yet. So what I did is I provided some proxy data that we had used in previous reports to look at students' literacy skills when they enter kindergarten. So we looked at student early literacy skills when they entered kindergarten. And remember, I pointed out that a third of our students are entering kindergarten below benchmark in early literacy skills. So there was a question about what percentage of students who actually completed preschool with us, what was that percentage of students that were on or above benchmark? And seventy-one percent of the students that have pre-K experience, either in Fairfax or another provider, are at or above benchmark. But only forty-one percent of the students coming into us without preschool experience are at or above benchmark. So there's a thirty-point gap there in kindergarten readiness based on whether or not students attended preschool. And then there was an additional question about the Bridge to K program. So remember, we talked a little bit about, you know, understanding that we haven't been able to serve all of the students that we would like to serve in FCPS, and we have a waitlist. But one of the things that Morris' team has done is implemented a three-week program that happens during the summer to provide services to students without preschool experience, and it focuses on school readiness skills, self-regulation, school routines, and early literacy. And we had eleven, about eleven hundred students participate in that program, and we had really strong results for the students who participated. So the question was, how much does that program cost if we were to add it to other sites? And it would be about twenty-five thousand dollars per school to expand to additional schools if we were to put in, and that twenty-five thousand dollars would cover two classrooms, which would cover about thirty-six kids. So we're currently at twenty-five schools. If we were to expand to any new schools, it would be about twenty-five thousand dollars for two classrooms of students at each school. So those were the additional data points that I just wanted to provide based on board questions on Thursday. And with that, I'm going to close up comments and turn it back over to Ms. Evans to see what questions and discussion the board has.
Thank you very much, Dr. Presidio. And I have Mr. Moon, and, all right.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ms. Evans, since I missed the entire presentation on Thursday night, could I have a little extra time?
A little bit extra time.
Okay, thank you, appreciate it. Yeah, please forgive me if I ask you the questions that have been asked multiple times by other board members. You said about fifty percent of those students who dropped out, or from either Level One or Level Two ESOL students between the ages sixteen and twenty-two. What about the other way around? What's the percentage of dropout from those taking Level One or Level Two, age between sixteen and twenty-two? The reverse is not the same as looking at from the other side, correct?
Yeah, so in the report, there's an appendix that has some additional data, and we have some information on the graduation rates by English learner level, and I want to see if I can find the page number for that. So that is on page fifty-seven. So you can see our graduation rates, our four-year graduation rate on page fifty-seven of the full report, which is broken down by English learner levels. So that, I think, is the closest approximation to the data that we had provided to your question.
Okay, I'll take a look at that. I'll take a look at that. The next question that I have is the impact of a preschool experience on benchmark, what did you say, or?
So we're using early literacy benchmarks.
Early literacy benchmarks.
At or above benchmark.
Okay.
The impact of preschool.
When I say that, making a thirty percent difference.
Yes.
Whether you have a preschool or not. How about, because long, many, many years ago, I remember receiving sort of conflicting researches on this about, I think at the time was, that was about kindergarten program, about whether this impact of a preschool experience has a, you know, whether it diminishes over time, over time, when you get to about third grade. Do you have any similar research?
Yeah, so we've looked at different studies, and we've had some discussion in previous years. I think it's probably been three years or so since I can remember having such a discussion with this board. But we do see an impact on preschool in terms of student performance. Once they enter kindergarten, it's the strongest, right? And that impact is going to decrease over time. But there's a few things that I think are important to remember about that. There's a lot of things that happen in those intervening years, right? So sometimes I think the research, when we've looked at kind of the longitudinal impacts of pre-K, and they look at third grade as a benchmark, or sixth grade as a benchmark, or high school, it's like you have to really consider all of the things that have happened in those intervening years. And education research, in the nature of education research, it's always difficult to point to really causational, you know, linear causation. And the more intervening time that you have, the more difficult it is. So to that point, one of the things that we've been doing over the last couple of years is working with the University of Virginia, who's doing a longitudinal study. And we are, and you might remember, because the dean is the lead investigator on that program, and he came up at the very beginning of that program about two years ago and gave a report to the board. And this did actually come up at the board meeting on Thursday night. The board might want to have him come back and talk more about some of the things that he's seeing, because this is a large federally-funded research grant that he's leading. And we have many of our students and teachers that are part of that program, because that investigation is not just looking at standardized achievement scores, it's looking at teacher perception, parent perception, students, student observations over time. So we are trying to look at this.
Okay, along the similar vein, you know, on the longitudinal study, whether it is possible to look at this aspect. I mean, I'm going to have to assume that two different students, one with a preschool experience, one without coming in, one without obviously falling behind, might need a little more additional help, assistance, or intervention to bring up to the benchmark level. Whether there's any way, as the board may be looking into, or the counties or, may be looking into providing, putting in more investment for preschool experiences for all children in Fairfax County, whether there's a way to quantify the benefits, financial benefits, in terms of budgetary impact of having this preschool experience rather than waiting until later and needing to provide intervention, which obviously also requires resources. Whether there's a way to look at, do the analysis in that way?
Yeah, I mean, there are studies, and I don't know off the top of my head what the results are, but I know that there have been studies that have been done to try to look at basically, what kind of early investment return do you get that offsets additional costs that would occur later on, right? So if students are falling behind, I mean, the, you know, a typical example is if a student is falling behind and is requiring additional support and intervention, and maybe ends up in special education to get those additional supports and services, that's a long-term cost associated that perhaps could have been prevented on the front end. So we haven't done our own internal analysis on that, but there have been other studies that have looked at similar issues. Actually, I'm going to let Maura jump in here, because I think she's signaling that she might actually have some of that information.
So you might recall, I think it was, and Lidi, you might be able to speak to this, about two or three years ago, we did an internal look at kids who attended pre-K and for you, and there was really good outcomes in terms of the publicly-funded pre-K, particularly around a return on investment around ESOL services, and I believe special ed services were the two biggest pieces where there was a savings for FCPS by having children in pre-K. Well, I can go back, and we can give you the link to that report, though.
That's great. I appreciate that, because I actually wasn't remembering that analysis, so.
Mr. Moon.
Please jump in, don't wait for me to see you over there.
I'm happy to put you on the go-back.
Thank you.
So thank you very much. And just to remind board members, we have given Mr. Moon some dispensation, because he was at his son's graduation last Thursday and wasn't able to ask all the questions we were. But what we're doing is running the clock for three minutes, comments, questions, and then staff is going to answer the questions after each board member is finished with their comments and questions. And I next have Mrs. Schultz.
So I have a follow-on, couple of questions about that. One is, can you differentiate between, on the graduation, from college, can you differentiate between the two and four years? That's one question. Two is, it's no longer a metric, why not? When did we get rid of it? And I think we should bring it back. Three is, a little bit of a follow-on on the pre-K. We have it, we have that pre-K program, you said, for the ones who don't have preschool. So I'm assuming that hits the target of the eight hundred or so who are on the waitlist, who never make it, because I've had multiple budget amendments over the years trying to prioritize four-year-olds. And unfortunately, my colleagues have not supported those. And so we, you know, as I say, with a four-year-old, they're going to be ours next year anyway. So is that program, that three-week program prioritizing some way, or is it a delivery because of where it's located? How many kids could, I guess you're saying twenty-five thousand per school? So that's, I forget, you said two classrooms each. How many, what's the capacity for us to expand that? I'm assuming that's somewhat facility-dependent. I think I've asked in the past if we could get into a public-private partnership with area private preschools and buy up slots, you know, get into an agreement that, look, if your slots aren't filled by August whatever, we'll buy them up, because those kids, at least having, even if we don't have access because of facility space in our own program, them having access to something is better than nothing, is what you're saying the data is showing. And then the last question on the graduation rates, I still, ninety-three percent of non-English learner Hispanics are graduating on time. Is that, if I understand that, correct? Who are the fifty percent who are the dropouts that aren't the sixteen and above? Who are those, and is there anything that we can do to help, to help those? Fourteen seconds that I'm going to yield back to myself at some point in the future.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Schultz. That was perfect.
I will now use fourteen minutes to answer your very thoughtful questions. Let me see what I can do. So the two- and four-year graduation rate, I think, is what you asked, or, excuse me, college graduation rate was what you had asked first. So we do have the information broken down by two-year and four-year colleges in terms of enrollment. I don't have the information broken down in terms of completion or graduation rate. So out of the seventy-five percent of our students who go straight on to a two-year, two-year or four-year college right after high school, the semester right after high school.
That's seventy-five percent of graduating seniors, is what you're saying?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep. Fifty-seven percent of those students enrolled in a four-year school, and eighteen percent enrolled in a two-year school. So that's the information that I have on that indicator. Then you asked about the Bridge to K preschool program costs and what those costs represent. The way that we costed out that twenty-five thousand dollars would be for two classrooms at a school, each classroom at eighteen students per classroom, so thirty-six students. Those costs, of course, are for the teacher, transportation, food services, material supplies, and other ancillary costs. In terms of expansion, and if we could go to the slide, I'm not sure which slide it is that has the preschool chart on it, but you'll recognize it when you see it. It's essentially a heat map of where we have the greatest areas of need. Those are the area.
My favorite slide. It took me a long time to get there, but one of my favorite slides.
Well, when the.
I'd even like a video on this.
We can do a video, a press release.
I love a video on this map.
Well, when staff and board members work together, you see what we get. So obviously, the areas that are most darkly shaded and have the highest percentage of students that come to us without preschool, those are the areas that we're focusing on. Facilities is sometimes an issue if a school's under renovation, if there are other issues there that are happening. But that's where we would be looking to expand. So again, with additional money, we would continue to try to expand in those areas. You ask about private preschool slots and investing, if a private school has space. That's not something that we've really had serious discussion about. So if that was something that the board was interested in, that'd be something we could discuss more with the board. And then you asked about graduation rates, and the graduation rate data that I was providing is essentially what you were saying. So for Hispanic students who are not English learners, the graduation rate is ninety-three percent for that student population. Most of our Hispanic students that were not graduating are English learners, and that's why I was raising that issue, and that's why there was further question about, what about Hispanic students who are not English learners? So then your question is, well, what about the other students that are not completing, that are not English learners? And, you know, there's a lot of different issues there. Some of those just obviously are due to credit accumulation, completion. Some of those are students with disabilities that we haven't been able to.
That's the real key.
Yeah.
See, therein lies the nut, is my question is, how many of those are students with disabilities?
And let me see if I have that, actually. Sloan, your folks over here, Betris, do you have it?
I've got to find the right chart here.
Because the real question to me is, not only students with disabilities, but how many get transferred into an alternative high school with a different curriculum model, the four-by-four, and they don't have access, they don't graduate on time?
Mm-hmm.
Or drop out because of it?
I mean, we have the percentage of students in the students with disabilities category that are graduating on time, and that's ninety-two percent. I'm trying to see if we had the actual N-size in our data chart or not. I think we would have it. If we can't find it, Sloan, we can.
We can come back to it, and.
It's actually on page fifty-six. So if you have follow-up questions, we could talk more about it. The N-size is on page fifty-six of the data appendix.
Would you like me to put you on the go-back list, Ms. Schultz? Okay. Next, I have Ms. Corbett-Sanders.
Thank you, and I'm glad this chart is up there, because what I would like to see is a secondary or an overlay to this chart, which shows the pre-K waiting list. So when we look at where the people, where the students are waiting to have services, are they also in that same darkened areas that we see?
Is that the next step, Mrs.?
This is the next step.
Okay.
So that it allows us to unpack it a bit more, because then that will allow us to strategically identify where we either, A, have to reach out to the community identify where we either A, have to reach out to the community and get them to understand they need to get their kids into pre-K, or provide pre-K supports, or B, we need to expand services in areas where there's a waitlist. Because if there's no waitlist, but it's dark, dark coloring, that means we have not done our job in educating folks in the need to it. The second piece is with the, I'm glad you mentioned the Bridge to K, but I think it would be very helpful to understand, when we looked at those longitudinal studies that Mr. Moon discussed a few minutes ago, is how many of the students who may have regressed a bit, or not had the full opportunity realized by a pre-K experience, are coming out of a Bridge to K experience versus a more structured pre-K experience? And so that, too, would be very helpful, to look at that data longer term. And with that, I do have a minute and 18 seconds. I'm going to stop, or 15 seconds, and I'll come back.
Did, did you need answers to any questions, or just have that?
Only if you have the answers. I think it's more something you have to look into.
Yeah, I think those, I think most of those were really suggestions for us to look at, so I don't believe that we could provide the information on the overlay right now. So I think we could, that could be something that we could look at as, as a possible next step.
All right, we'll, we'll add that as a next step, then. That's, that's fine. Okay.
Okay.
Ms. Palchek.
Thank you. I think I have a, I think three questions, some of them follow-up to some of my colleagues. The first one is related to Ms. Schultz's question around two versus four-year colleges. I appreciate that information. In addition, I'm wondering, are we able to break it down, I guess, by college or by part-time versus full-time students? Does the 18% include students who do NOVA to GMU bridge? My other question is around the Bridge to Pre, Bridge to K and pre-K. The one I haven't heard us discuss or gather more information on is the, our early and family literacy programs, which I believe also incorporate the parents, and are also pretty cost-effective, highly efficient. So I would love to get more information on that, and if we've done any data gathering or longitudinal studies on those programs and have recommendations. And then finally, looking at the full report, and pretty disappointed to see our, our low numbers for our Hispanic students and our economically disadvantaged students. And while I understand some of that is, yes, are English learners, and hopefully we have a plan. It seems also on the chart, I believe it's page 53 of the full report, has the comparisons of FCPS to Virginia on the reading and math SOLs and on-time graduation. And from that chart, it seems that we're at or above Virginia in most areas, except for Hispanic students economically disadvantaged and graduations for English learners. So I guess I was hoping you could give a little bit more, and I think it's before that, 53, more analysis of why you think that might be. And then final one, I don't know if I missed it, but do we have an update, or will it be an update on our changes to the adult high school this year? Any impacts we've seen, and kind of what we're planning to do for next year? I know some sites were closed, and if we've been able to kind of review or continue to review those changes? I think that's it. Thank you.
All right, very good. So the first question you asked was about two and four-year college enrollment and graduation rates. So that's not a board-approved metric, so I didn't produce information in this report on it. It was just something that came up, so we pulled some information on it over the weekend. Certainly, as the board has discussed, you know, the strategic plan and the metrics, that could be something the board would choose to add back in, as something that I could provide, as a supplemental report in any case. So if you wanted more detailed information on that, we could do it, but it wasn't within the scope of this report, so I don't have that information available right now. And then you had some, I think, really good suggestions with respect to Bridge to K and early literacy programs, and Maura, I don't know if you wanted to comment on either one of those, because Morris' team does work very closely with our family engagement office on some of these initiatives, like home instruction for preschool youth, early literacy in different languages. I don't know if you had anything that you wanted to comment on with respect to those programs and how valuable they are?
So we don't have any long-term data, only, I believe it's this year that those students who attend those programs are now captured in CIS. So I believe we'll be able to do some tracking of kids long-term in the future who attend those programs.
Okay, so I guess the next step has to be a future step. There's no current data we can gather on that.
Except participation.
Again, I, I would hesitate, and we could talk about this more when we come with next steps. I mean, we can certainly get participation data. I think it would be really difficult to say that a student and a family participated in an early literacy program and that had some long-term impact on their overall performance, because there's so many other factors that are going into that experience.
Right, I guess my question would be more about the, the K, the literacy readiness testing that we do. We should be able to align that to the students who've gone through those programs as well?
We could, we could certainly look at that. Again, I'd have to work with the Office of Strategic Research and Strategic Improvement, because they'd have to help us with that type of analysis. So that could be something that we would look at if the full board wanted to do that. I think those programs are really important, because they're engaging students and families and building their capacity to support literacy, right? But I, I would never argue that that would substitute for, and I know that you wouldn't either, but that that would substitute for a preschool experience. And I wouldn't expect it to have necessarily an effect that would show with a large effect size on student achievement on a standardized reading assessment, right? It's building a culture of reading, love of reading in the home, and a culture of support and collaboration between the home and the school that I think can have long-term impact. So I think we'd have to just kind of be, have a little bit more information about what type of information and data would be most helpful to the board.
So Ms. Palchek, would you like me to put you on go-back? Or are you? Ms. McGlocklin?
I, I have two more follow-ups to Ms. Palchek's questions.
I beg your pardon. Oh, I'm sorry. All right, go ahead.
You also asked about the state comparison, and this is an example of one of the charts. When I was saying, you know, Ms. Huffman did a great job in providing additional information, because again, this is information that's not part of, you know, the board-approved metrics. So she wanted to provide some additional information and some additional context for how we can view and look at our student achievement results. So on this particular chart, what you see is for reading SOLs, math SOLs, and the graduation rate, how the state performed, how we performed as a division, and then the difference. So for example, in the reading chart, you're looking at that first column represents Virginia pass rates for reading SOLs. The second column represents Fairfax, and the third is the difference. So you can see that we're above the state average in most areas, other than two areas, Hispanic and economically disadvantaged. And again, like we talked about on Thursday, when you start to pull apart who most of those students are, most of those students are English learners, again, that are represented in multiple categories and multiple demographic groups. The last question you had was about the adult high school, and we do continue to look at our program efficacy there. We've got three different programs that, what we would refer to as overaged English learners, students that might come to us, particularly at age 18 or above, can access our two alternative schools, and then Fairfax Adult High School, which has three geographic locations. So we've been, I think, in a better position to serve those students this year, because there's been additional space to serve them, locations to serve them in, and additionally different program options for those students. So accessing the GED, for example, and trying to expedite their path to high school completion, so that they can continue with their education and continue in the workforce. But I think those were most of your questions.
Thank you. Ms. McGlocklin?
Yes, I mean, it's obviously a dense report, and one of the things we talked about at Thursday night's meeting is that there's no way 12 board members are going to be able to bring forward all the areas of focus and questions we have on the report. So we'll just have to, what I hope for is maybe we sort of divide and conquer on how we spotlight and highlight different things within the report. So, two things. I first brought up at Thursday night's meeting that any metric where we're already at 90 or, you know, hot, anywhere from 90% and above, but particularly, we had some metrics where we were already at 97 to 100. I don't see those as strategic metrics. I, I think that we should, as a board, communicate to Dr. Brabran and the team that this is good news, and you want to put that in appendix, that's great, but it doesn't deserve to be front and center. Meanwhile, if everybody's had a chance to go into the appendix, there's actually, the data points that I don't understand why they're not front and center. So Dr. Brabran, I would ask that you and your team, my, my follow-up next step to my colleagues, and before I can even vote on this thing, is I've got to have some assurances that you and your team are going to go through with your operational expertise and say, these metric, these metrics where we're already at 90, 95 and above, they're secondary, we'll keep tracking them, they'll be in the, in the appendix. But the ones that are in the appendix need to be lifted up, and they should be our strategic metrics. For example, when we're looking at eliminating gaps on page 50 of the report, when we do that cross-reference of looking at where we've got gaps, but then where students may fall into two or more buckets. You know, we, we keep doing everybody in single buckets, but that's not how our children come. And when you start to look at just some of the analysis of, white students make up 30% of the, the student population in Fairfax County schools, but when it comes to poverty, they make up about 12%. And then when we look at our students of color, particularly for African-Americans and Hispanics, there, it's an inverse representation, high, much higher percentage representation. In particular, Hispanic students, when I was looking at, they make up 20%, 26% of our student population, but they make up 56% of our students in poverty. So that's, that's where we should be having our strategic conversations about identifying where are the gaps, especially where we know the national research shows that if you are a student who is facing poverty, dealing with poverty, it makes it that much harder to handle the challenges of academic achievement, because you're trying to just make sure your basic needs are getting met. And so I'm, I'm now running into my 20 seconds left, but I would just say that that page 50 alone should be in one of our top metrics of analysis, and what is the game plan? And I see Mr. Greenfelder here. It's always lovely to see you. I, I think this has got to be a key component of our Project Momentum work. Maybe it's something you're already doing, but this is where we've got to get out of the stovepipe and start talking about this wraparound work. But this, to me, is analysis that was deserving of being inside the report, not in an appendix.
And so now, I'll give Dr. Presidio an opportunity to answer, and Ms. McGlocklin, would you like to be on a go-back also?
Yes, please.
Okay.
Before Dr. Presidio responds, I, I just want to remind the board, we've worked together for two years on putting in metrics and targets. We said this is a living document, and, and we can engage, okay, you know what, this is good, we don't, we've, we've, mission accomplished, take it off, and something that you see and hear. The goal, which is what I think is happening, is having transparent conversations about our data, where we're really good, and where we still fall short, and what we're going to then do about addressing it. So that's the table I've been working to set with you all, and so I wanted to see, again, there, to me, is more detail and transparency before this board on this data than you've seen in quite some time. What you want to lift up and put more forward in the plan each year? And again, this is our first bite of the apple, and what you all want to do differently, let me know. One thing I want you all to know, staff is talking about, we really want to present the, these goals have been on this rotation through the year. I want to present this as soon as possible in the fall, after we get our results in. So the board isn't getting this delay in reacting to the data that does come. And, and so we're working on how to, working with the chair leadership on how to do that moving forward. But we totally understand, whether it comes to the target issue of, look, let's keep the aspirational, but we don't want the interim. We, we spent a lot of time talking about it, but I am open-minded about how we want to go moving forward, and about what can come off and what needs to come on. And I think the balance for the board is figuring out how many targets to focus the school system and the administration on, and what that right balance is. But I appreciate those comments, Ms. McGlocklin.
So if I could just take a few minutes and kind of build on what Dr. Brabran said, not to be repetitive, but definitely, you know, we can continue to work with the board to revise these metrics. The reason we included the information in the appendix is to provide that context for the data that are board-approved metrics, right? Because I've done this for seven years with this board, and I know the level of analysis that individual board members do, looking at these reports. So I know it's a long report, and I know that you spend a lot of time digging into the reports as board members and really doing that analysis. So the goal was, this year, is to try to provide you some of that information, if I could upfront, that might be helpful in, in your analysis and in our conversation together. So I'm happy to, to tweak things that are either, you know, at the board's discretion, board-approved metrics, or other things that we might want to include that might not even be board-approved metrics, but might help give more context to, to the report. And I think you made some really important, you know, observations, and I appreciate you looking at the appendix and digging into it, and saying, you know, look at what we're talking about here in terms of student membership and student performance. Our data says what the research says and what we know to be true, right? Factors of poverty, and students who are still becoming proficient in English language, those students need a lot of additional supports. And the other group that we haven't talked about as much today, but did come up a little bit on Thursday, are students with disabilities. Those are the three student groups that we know we've got to do a better job of serving and supporting. So what are we doing about that? I mean, just a few kind of things in general to start that conversation. I would say, I know everybody on this board is familiar with the closing the achievement gap framework that we have, but it's six evidence-based drivers that say you can't just do one thing to close achievement gaps. You can't just improve instruction. It can't be just academic support. That's one of the drivers. You also have to have rigorous instruction, right? So access to rigor is another one of our drivers. You have to have culturally relevant instruction and culturally responsive schooling practices. So links and connections with our families and with our students, that's our relationships driver. You have to help students set big aspirational goals. That's our college and career driver. Students have to come to school ready to learn every day. And that's, yes, that's early childhood education, but it's also support for students that might have social, emotional challenges and issues that they're working with, that might have issues related to housing insecurity or food insecurity, right? Those are the things that we have to start talking about and the things that we have to start working on. So using that framework, we've been working with schools on that, and I'm so excited this year, because for the first time since I've been on this leadership team, we're taking our school improvement plans and aligning, using the metrics in the board's plan, providing every school their data to look at on those metrics, and helping them think about their data through the multiple lenses of the CAG framework, and thinking about holistic approaches and strategies to take to supporting improvement in these particular areas in their schools. And that's a really coordinated and collaborative effort, and that's why Dr. Zulag and I are up here, so to say that's something that regions and departments are doing together. So that's just some of the work that we're, that we're doing this year that I think is going to yield some improvements. Certainly, Mr. Greenfelder, and I'm not going to ask him to come up unless he wants to or other board members want him to come up, but the work that he's been leading in Project Momentum and the expansion and the support of Project Momentum that this board has supported, has allowed us to add specialists in special education, specialists in English language development in each of our regions as part of the Project Momentum efforts. So really going in and working with schools and thinking about, in these special populations, how can we adjust our instruction? How can we adjust our supports? So we have, I think, a lot of really good things that are in, in process and in place, but it's going to take everything that we can do collaboratively in a coordinated effort to start to address and close some of these gaps. And that's why I think this contextual data is important, because it shines a light on the different student populations in, as it pertains to different metrics that we know that we need to look at and think about.
Thank you. Mr. Wilson?
Thank you, Ms. Evans. So I'm just going to, I'm going to read my questions and then let you answer them, so that we can be as efficient as possible. I, I would like you to, again, go over the $25,000 figure per school for preschool, because I guess I'd, it seems like an awfully reasonable number to educate 30, 36 students. Oh, that's just for a three-week period. Okay, okay. That, thank you. I may, I didn't hear that part. Okay, so, so that's for, that's, that's for a very limited period of time. Okay, excellent. The next question actually has to do with the current pre-K program that we have in FCPS, and if you could talk about the and if you could talk about the long-term data you have on children that are in that program, and I know long-term may not be so long, but just to show, like, where are they at, you know, when they, for first, for entering kindergarten, and then third grade, and then if you have data after that. Also, I'd like to have you just explain a little bit about the heat map. While I agree that it is a, it's a very useful slide, could you talk about how that data was gathered, so that we understand sort of whether it was gathered over a period of time, and how you gathered it, was it voluntarily gathered, et cetera? Then I'm going to, I, I'd like you to answer just a couple of questions about one of the appendix on early childhood education. In, I think it's about page fifty, but, or maybe page forty, there is a reference to high-quality learning experiences for early childhood. Can you just describe what that means? Like, is that, would that include, say, a home daycare setting? Or is there, are there criteria that we are requiring to satisfy that requirement? Also, in that same section of the appendix, it talks about how there's a new state assessment called the Child Behavior Rating Scale that is now going to be put into place. Was that something that, can you just, A, tell us and talk to us about what that means? What is that? Did FCPS support that change at the state level? And then in particular, on, with regards to that scale, in the text of that section, talks about how it's, it appears to describe that socio-emotional development will be replaced as the, as, will replace reading as the proxy for the benchmark for entering kindergarten. So, I know that's a number of questions, but...
All right, those are great, great questions. I'm going to start with a few of them, and I'm going to ask Maura to, to join in as we kind of go through a few of them. I'm going to actually defer the long-term data, because as, as Maura mentioned, we actually do have some long-term data on that, I don't have that in front of me. She may actually be able to pull it up, I don't know if she can. If not, we'd be happy to send you that information as a next step. On the heat map, you asked questions about how that information was gathered. We work with the Facilities Department and their Projections Team to gather this information. And we gather it on an annual basis, so we look at changes from year to year. There were some changes in this particular year in terms of some schools with a higher percentage of students entering without pre-K, and some schools actually going down. So, we do have that additional information. So, for example, like, Lee has the highest percentage of students entering without preschool experience. That wasn't the case last year, so they're now the highest. So, we do have that additional information. And then you asked about high-quality early learning experiences. And I think essentially, your question was, you know, does that have to be in a formalized preschool setting? Are there different places that that could happen, in a private setting, in a daycare setting, in a home? And we do believe that there are different places that you can have a high-quality early childhood experience. And that's one of the major pieces of improvement efforts that Maura's team has been working on, because we understand for a variety of reasons, families might not want to send their children, young children, to a preschool, religious reasons, cultural reasons. And how can we support those parents, and how can we support those students with high-quality experiences? So, one of the things Maura's team has been working on is working with daycare providers, and trying to make sure that they have access to information, research, curriculum resources and materials, professional development whenever we can. I think they worked with a hundred different providers this year in these types of efforts to help them really bolster the quality of programming that students might be getting in a non-formal, non-structured preschool setting. So, we do believe that that's important. And then finally, you had asked questions about the new Child Behavior Rating Scale, and that is part of the new Virginia Kindergarten Readiness Program, which is a new required state assessment of early learning that's going to be given for the first time this fall in all of our schools in the state of Virginia. So, that was not something that we had a choice in. We did express to VDOE both support and some concerns about how to do this. The information, I believe, is going to be helpful, but it is one more state mandated and one more state-required assessment. So, as part of this assessment, students will still have the literacy assessment that they've been doing, which we've been using the I-Ready assessment in FCPS. They'll now have a math assessment that will be developed at the state level, and they'll have the Child Behavior Rating Scale, which is looking at those issues of executive functioning and social-emotional development. And we did have discussion when the board was choosing which metrics to adopt about using this new measure, because this would be a measure that we're going to be required to give, instead of adding an additional measure as a board on top of that measure. So, we'll still have access to the literacy assessment, we'll still have access to the math da, data, but we'll now have this additional information as part of the Chi, Child Behavior Rating Scale as well. So, that's why we had recommended to the board that we use and adopt this metric instead of adding yet another assessment on top of what was already required at the state level. So, I'm going to go back to Maura, and see if she has any additional information on any of those questions that you had, Mr. Wilson.
Thank you. So, now we'll go to Ms. Keys-Gamarra. Oh, you have it in more, okay, thirty seconds.
Thank you, Ms. Evans. So, just to clarify, the, the data that's gathered, is that self-reported data? That, that's gathered, you said, through facilities, or, I mean, you, how do we get that data?
So, it's, it's part of the registration process for kindergarten. Every parent fills out a form called for pre-K experience, and there are multiple choices from a private-paid preschool to a publicly-funded preschool.
And do you keep track of the, the response rate, or is it a hundred percent of all parents participate?
It's part of the registration process, so it, the numbers don't specifically match up to enrollment, but it is supposed to be part of the registration process, so it's, it's very high.
Yeah. That's fine. And then, and then the second question, I guess, this is for you, Dr. Presidio. Just in terms of that change at the state level, to me, it seems significant in terms of implementing this, the new criteria. Do you anticipate that it, that the socio-emotional development and the self-regulation will in fact be a better proxy for success than what's been used in the past?
Well, the more research that we see, we are seeing information that would say, without that information, some of the academic information is not as effective longitudinally, right? So, I think, instead of saying one data point is better than another, it's looking at the academics and the social-emotional development together. I will say, the students that don't have those self-regulation skills in early childhood education really do struggle in that transition to the classroom. So, when you're struggling in that transition, then you're getting behind in your academics. So, the things really are, I, I think, work in tandem together.
So, Tom, if I could on that, because I think that's a big nugget. Our approach in the past has been, the kid is struggling, we've only looked at it through the academic lens, and we've given you more scoops of academics, more reading instruction, another reading program, more reading support. If you put a social-emotional lens onto that child and assess those executive functioning skills, it may become a balance. It isn't necessarily more reading instruction, it's reading instruction balanced by getting the social-emotional supports the kid needs to navigate the classroom, to navigate learning. And I think that's the part, frankly, not just for Fairfax, for all school districts in Virginia and across the country. A lot of our academic failure for kids, some of it, some of that failure is rooted in socio-emotional needs that have gone unaddressed. And if we don't get the kids in with those supports, all the additional academic support we're throwing at kids just isn't going to seep through. So, I think that's, that, and that's a sea change, a little bit in our own mindset as educators. We weren't trained, to be honest, we were trained to be content providers, not necessarily socio-emotional support. And I think the state is, I, I, I don't like another assessment, per se, unfunded, but I do think this is going to help us, really help the board, provide more advocacy for, if we're going to assess socio-emotional, then we better put socio-emotional in the standards of quality for the Commonwealth. And they're, they're slowly but surely starting to make that turn.
So, Dr. Brabran, that's, that's really helpful, but can you just, I appreciate you giving a little bit of an explanation. Do you expect that it will actually be tailored between, to differentiate between boys and girls, you know, in the early, in the socio-emotional development? With two of each in my own family, I can tell you that's very different. So, I'd just be curious what you think.
You know, I don't know yet, because I haven't seen the data, and I'm, I'm, I'm not going to say I'm the expert, Maura. Do you have an insight into that, just from your years of experience to say?
I think we really have to wait to see the data.
Ms. Keys-Gamarra?
Well, thank you, Dr. Presidio. I know this is a lot of information, and it is an ongoing work. So, I want you to know, I appreciate that before I start giving more. I, I want to say, and you said something earlier, I was a little disappointed that I wasn't the next person, because you were talking about the impact of the socioeconomic status and how that relates to, to learning. And so, I, that begs the question of us having this discussion about raising the FRM level for our Title I schools. And so, I have to say that that is very concerning to me, and how we might compensate for that, or are we going to be in a position to identify that those schools that we will eventually siphon off? I know there's a grandfather clause. But I'm concerned about, are we meeting, are we going to, do we have a plan to meet those needs when we know that that socioeconomic status has such an impact on sometimes being even able to assess education, or assess the, 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 the learning process? Having said that, I, I'm going to come back to one of my favorite schools, because I feel like they do such an amazing job, and I was looking for the numbers on here for Braddock Elementary. I know they're pretty high, they're a Title I school, they've achieved some success. And so, I'm just wondering, are we looking at schools like that as possible answers or models for some of the schools that we're dealing with? With respect to, let me get my question on preschool. I, I, Ms. Schultz kind of tickled me a little bit with the comment that she made, because I'm wondering, as we look at these areas of where we don't have, where we have a higher percentage of kids not accessing preschool, are we also looking at a higher number of students being disciplined? And how they're being disciplined, and how that's impacting their ability to access learning? I'd, I'd love to see a, and maybe I missed it, so forgive me, please point it out to me, if there's a correlation between, for example, the Young Scholars Program and, and whether kids are moving on to Level Four, or whether, you know, whether they're moving on to advanced academics. So, I, I want to, I, I, I think my two overall concerns have to do with our proposals with respect to Title One, and how we're going to address that gap that we may be creating if we, if we adopt the changes. And then also, how we may be able to layer in the discipline information, because I think that there may be an impact there as well.
All right, very good. So, I think on the Title I conversation, you know, that's been a really important issue, I know, for many members of the board, and there've been recent discussions as part of the budget process about that, and I think those discussions are, are still ongoing. So, I would say, you know, there are a number of things that we do already in some of those schools to provide those additional supports. And we need to be thinking about additional things that we might need to do in some of those schools to make sure that if they are losing Title I funding, after grandfathering and everything is no longer provided and available, what additional supports could we provide? And I would say, things like the discussions that the board is already having, things like full-time advanced academic resource teachers in all of our Title I schools, are the kinds of things that the board could think about and discuss when we talk about additional opportunities for access to rigor in some of our more economically disadvantaged schools. Looking at things like extending elementary summer programs, summer enrichment programs. So, our Young Scholars Program, again, we have a summer program for that program, but not all of our schools are able to necessarily send students to that program just based on budget and based on funding. So, what additional supports and resources and enhancements can we provide in our Title I schools, I think is an ongoing conversation, but we do have some things in place. Your, your comment about, you know, Braddock as a model site, and are we sharing best practices? I would say, I think that we are doing that. I would invite, if, if he would like to, Dr. Zulawaga, to add any additional context on that. But I do know that we work very hard, both within the regions and across the division, to try to make sure that schools are sharing best practices. And we do that in a number of different ways. Sometimes, in our all-county principal meetings, we have opportunities for schools to highlight promising practices and best practices and principles to be able to work together. As part of our professional development that we do, whether it's pertaining to things like advanced academics, ESOL services, we're always partnering with model schools, so that it's not just central office staff talking about what are best practices and promising practices. It's teachers learning from teachers, principals learning from principals. And we try to do that as frequently as we can. And we also have opportunities where we use things like, basically, what we call model lab sites, where teachers and principals can go and see some of these practices in place in other schools. We do that in ESOL, we do that in AAP, we do that in a number of different areas. Project Momentum uses that strategy very frequently on, on a regular basis in their program. So, we try to provide those opportunities, but it's always something, I think, that we can continue to look at, how could we enhance those types of opportunities for students? And then you asked about a correlation between whether or not students that did not experience pre-K, what does the discipline look like for students in those schools? And to my knowledge, we don't have any of that type of analysis that's been done recently, but I'm looking over at the team, and nobody's shaking their head that they disagree. So, that's not something that we currently have analysis that we could provide.
Thank you.
I have six seconds.
May I put you on a go-back, Ms. Keys-Gamarra, rather than taking six seconds?
So, you want to pay me for my six seconds?
Sure. I'll pay you for your six seconds, and I'll put you on your, on a go-back.
These seconds are very valuable.
So, if there's no one else who has a first turn, I do have several go-backs, but I'm going to take a, a turn myself before going to go-backs. Thank you for, for bringing us the, the graduation rates for Hispanic students with, without the English language learners in it. That was something I had, had asked for. I think that certainly does inform us in that area. It's certainly much, much closer now to our average graduation rate. Still, however, below Asian, white, and black graduation rates, even when we pull out the English language learner students. So, I think that also needs to inform us in terms of where we need to focus a tremendous amount of our effort. Clearly, our English language learners, and I know we're doing a lot for our English language learners, and of course, they're not all Spanish-speaking, you know, we, we certainly have white, black, and Asian English language learners, just not quite as many. So, I do think that, that that's an area where we really have to think long and hard about what more can we be doing for those, those learners? And I know we've done a lot, particularly our older ones. And it, does it, does it warrant doing something more, does it warrant doing something different? Secondly, I do have a question, and this, whether this is the next step or whether you have it off the top of your head, I had raised this about providing laptops for all of our high school students, and soon we will be providing them for all of our middle school students. I have been hearing, particularly among our newcomer students, about coming in and not having a basic understanding about computer skills. And so, what do we have currently in place to provide basic computer skills, basic skills for our newcomers who come in here really with no understanding of, of how to operate a computer? Because I, what I'm hearing is people turning to the student next to them and saying, you know, what, how do I, how do I operate this thing that they've given me? I'm sure that's not what we intend, and there, there must be something that we are doing, but I, I would like to learn more about what we're doing with students who don't currently have a, a basic understanding of computer skills. You know, our newcomers already have plenty of challenges without throwing that at them without support. My other question the other night was the, how the Capstone Projects work with IB, since IB also has a very elaborate project, and a great project with it. And then lastly, I had raised I-Ready, and I did send you a, the email that the board received saying that the, having concerns about I-Ready. So, I was hoping that you could address the concerns that were raised in that email. Thank you.
All right, thank you. So, first of all, I mean, thank you again for your comment about making sure that we're really focused on our graduation rates for our English learners, because that, again, is the major area of focus for us, I believe, as a division. And while it's completely understandable why students that aren't proficient in English are going to struggle to be on track for on-time graduation, we've got to continue to figure... to figure out, how can we create more flexibility for them and more supports for them? Because we know how important graduation is for students' economic success. On the laptop issue, it is something, well, one point of clarification first. The board had included in the FY '20 budget to expand to all of our high schools for the 1920 school year. And the board would come back and reconsider later whether to expand to middle schools. So that has not yet been decided. So I just wanted to clarify that for members of the, yeah, no, just for members of the community that might have questions about that because sometimes we get questions on that. But your point about making sure that the newcomers are sufficiently prepared is really important. And we do that in a number of different ways. That's part of kind of our focus and our professional development, working with teachers. So before we ever start implementing the devices, remember, teachers are going through a year of professional development with us to prepare for the implementation of the devices. So we've been working all year with teams at each of the high schools to prepare for this work. And part of that is, you know, how do you set up a classroom that is fully enabled with one-to-one computing devices, not just on the teacher's side, but also on the student's side? So what supports, what instruction, what preparation needs to take place to make sure that students are successful? Our schools that are part of Phase One all have kind of support structures in place where they have staff and students that are available to help students that have problems and need additional support, instruction, and help. And for our newcomers in particular, as part of our Strategies for Success class, which is really schooling practices, this is part of, and can be expanded, there's no question, part of helping students through that Strategies of Success class get some of that support, some of that basic instruction as well. And there are other things that are in place, but I think it's a really important question. So our team can continue to talk about how we can build that, those supports out even more. But those are a few of the supports that are in place. Then you asked a question about the Capstone and how it relates to IB. So again, for, this is new information because we only are piloting the Capstone Presentations of Learning. We haven't implemented those division-wide yet. So we're in 16 different schools in the different regions around the division and the different grade levels. And the idea with the Presentations of Learning is to have a way to have students really demonstrate through work product and through reflection how they're progressing on their development of Portrait of a Graduate attributes. So the feedback from teachers is really important, but it's perhaps even more important for students to be able to demonstrate that work, which is why we have a public presentation, a public display for students to be able to have that own internal reflection on where they are and how they're growing and their Portrait of a Graduate attributes. Anything that students are already doing similarly in the IB program could be how that particular teacher would choose to do the Presentation of Learning in his or her class. It wouldn't have to be an additional project, it wouldn't have to be an additional reflection, it wouldn't necessarily have to be an additional graded experience that a teacher would have to participate in because there's so much similarity. If you look at the IB learner profile and the characteristics of the IB learner profile, the IB learner profile matches up very well with the Portrait of a Graduate. It's just even more detailed and even more specific. So we understand that there are a lot of these types of learning experiences that are happening already in many of our schools, even though they're not formally as part of the pilot. And we want to make it as easy as possible for schools to be able to take the things that they're doing now and transition those into these types of experiences for students. And then your last question was about iReady. And I would say a few things and then maybe if there's additional questions, we could follow up kind of offline because you sent me some really good information about concerns that a teacher had. And there were a lot of different concerns, obviously, in that particular email that I couldn't address all of them right now. But as I mentioned on Thursday, the first thing that you have to remember about iReady, one is it's required by the state for us to have an early literacy assessment at the primary grades. Two, we believe strongly in Fairfax that as part of our MTSS process, our multi-tiered systems of support, we have to have a screening instrument available to identify students that might have literacy skill gaps. And we worked really, really hard several years ago with parents in this community that had concerns about students that might have early literacy skill gaps not being identified. And when we ran our pilot and when we did full implementation in 1718, we found that using our prior screening methodologies, we were missing students that needed attention. So there is a need for us to have a screening instrument that can be used consistently across the division. That being said, we know that there are implementation challenges with any new assessment we're going to give, and there are legitimate concerns on the part of folks in our schools. And the biggest concern is the amount of time it takes to administer the assessment, right? And so we're continuing to work with the vendor on that. We're continuing to look at how we might be able to make modifications to our own assessment policies and practices to reduce the amount of time that that assessment takes for students. And then the other big issue is making sure that our teachers understand how the information can be used to support the instructional decision-making in their classrooms and not be just a piece of data that doesn't connect to the work that they're doing. So we've been working this year with our literacy leaders and our math resource teachers in our schools to really do a lot of professional development with our teachers and principals about how to use the information. So this year has been a lot more smooth than last year, which was the first year of implementation, but it's still not perfect and we still have improvement to make.
Thank you very much. And with that, I will yield my three seconds to Ms. Keys-Gamara, having paid her for her six seconds. I have go-backs. Is there anyone who hasn't had a first turn who would like to go? If not, I will go back to Mr. Moon.
Thank you, Ms. Evans. Just a couple of areas. One has to do with the graduation rate, the other with the achievement gaps. With the graduation rate, I was looking at the data on page 58, which is in the appendix of the report. Thanks for those more detailed, you know, information regarding graduation rates. With, especially with, in the second, not that one, on page 58? Okay, and in the second chart, at the bottom, we have both EL and Hispanics, which is a significant drop off from the others. Two, and I do not want to just speculate on this one, but what might be missing is, especially amongst English Language Learners who may be coming into our school system in not necessarily from kindergarten years, but could be somewhere during their middle school years or even high school years or even, you know, middle elementary school, not again necessarily from, might be lacking compared to other students who have gone through kindergarten through 12 within FCPAs, more their basic education or their early education. I'm not necessarily saying, you know, pre-K or preschool, that's not what I mean. They might be needing their more formal educations before they came to the US or in our school system. Is that, do you have anything regarding that?
So we don't really have that type of data. What we do have is students with interrupted formal education. So we've had data on students with interrupted formal education. And the way that that's been calculated, and I'm looking for the data, but Mr. Polio might have it and he might be able to help us. The way that's calculated is looking at students that are either an English Learner Level One student or a Level Two student in grades three through 12. And that's how we've collected that data over time, using those kind of business rules. And I think for this particular cohort here, 1718, that we had approximately 700 students that had interrupted formal education represented in the division. The other thing that was a data point that I provided to the board on Thursday is out of the non-graduates, the dropouts in this cohort, there were 1,031 dropouts. 526 of those students, so more than 50%, were English Learners Levels One and Two students.
So since you say you had about 700 students with, what do you call that?
Interrupted.
Interrupted formal education. What, you know, from the last group, EL and Hispanic, how many of that 1,000 students might possibly be that?
I can't answer that question with this data.
Would you be able to answer that in the future?
We could put that as a next step and we could see if we could calculate it that way.
Thank you. Let me now go back, let me now go to achievement gaps.
We could, Mr. Moon, we could answer that in the future. I think right now, we just started tracking formally these students with interrupted formal education, that data after this graduation cohort started. So just two years ago, did we really start defining it as Level One and Two students through? So in the future, we will be able to track that data and see how those students are doing with the supports that we're putting in place.
Okay, thank you. And I just want to make one comment regarding that last group. With both English Language Learners and Hispanics together, I assume the larger part of that, those students are also from poverty, in poverty.
Right.
Okay, thank you. Just quickly going to achievement gaps, you talked about six drivers as a tools to perhaps eliminate or reduce the achievement gaps. How long have those six drivers been existence, sort of, been in our attention in FCPs?
I'd say approximately four years.
Just four years. The system has been wrestling with, you know, this, you know, challenge for decades and it has come to our attention for the last four years, the importance of the six drivers. That's somewhat disappointing.
No, I wouldn't say that the six drivers just came to our attention. One of the things that we did, it was four or five years ago, was tried to take the body of emerging research on how to close achievement gaps and provide synthesized information that would be actionable to our schools. So what we did is we took a large body of educational research and said, what are the research-based components that need to be in place to close achievement gaps? And they're represented within those six drivers. And then we've updated that research from time to time. We just did a recent update of that research several months ago. And what I was trying to communicate is that while we've had that framework, it's our Closing the Achievement Gap framework, we haven't had our schools look at their own gaps through the lenses of those six drivers and then develop their school improvement plans in the same way that the board is looking at the metrics in the strategic plan. That's new work that's happening this year on the part of the leadership team and something that Dr. Braybrand has really stressed is important, is let's align our system if we want to see system improvement. We have a system-wide strategic plan, our school improvement process needs to be aligned to that. So we're taking some of that research and applying it in new ways. And, you know, my hypothesis is that we'll start to see improvements. The other thing I would say, though, on Thursday night in my closing comments, not, again, to be repetitive, but I did say, as you point out, we've been working on closing achievement gaps for two decades. We can do everything in the classroom and we're not going to eliminate some of the issues that are causing these gaps to exist in the first place. So we have a one Fairfax policy that calls on us to look at a more community holistic approach to addressing these gaps. And when we have students coming into school, we know that they need to be ready to learn. That's one of the drivers in our Achievement Gap framework. If as a community, we're not providing support for students that are coming to school on a daily basis with social, emotional concerns and needs, with hunger concerns and needs, with housing insecurity, then we're not going to be able to close these gaps. So we need to take a larger view of what we're doing as a community. And that's why things like community schooling practices that a number of board members have been talking about as a policy priority are so important. That's why we've got to actually start to push on some of these conversations. What does the county do? What does the school system do? What do you do at home? And what does the larger community do?
Could I have just 10 more seconds, Ms. Evans?
All right, 10 more seconds.
10 more seconds. So maybe this goes to our strategic plan and some of those metrics discussion, we need to have further discussion, we need to have in those. Because as I recollect, some of the metrics call for us to basically reduce, eliminate the gaps by certain timeframe.
Correct.
That's 10 seconds, Mr. Moon.
Right, based upon what you're saying, that, you know, what FCPs's efforts might not be sufficient to even eliminate those gaps in those metrics because that requires community-wide support.
Correct.
Thank you.
And I'm now going to go to Ms. Darnett Kopeck, who's taking her first turn.
Thank you, and I apologize for being here late. I was at a community event that, for one of my schools. So thank you again for this report as we, you gave us the first go-round on Thursday evening. I have some questions and a comment about what you were talking about. I walked in right when you were talking about the wraparound services that we're looking at now and how important they are. I know that particularly for that group, that we all work together to get that those EL, Level Learners One and Two, you know, changing the curriculum a few years back, making certain, all of those, all those changes that we made. And I think, Mr. Polio, that's what you were referencing by saying, we have about two years of data now, but we're soon going to be able to analyze strides made in that. So I guess my first question is, is how many, I know it's available in every school that needs it, but every high school that needs it, is every high school actually participating to some extent?
Absolutely. And I'm going to invite Rich to weigh in here in just a minute. But just a few kind of introductory comments. First, I want to recognize Dr. Zulawaga because, yeah, stop the timer, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Well, actually, could you get through your questions and then let Dr. Presidio answer them? That's kind of how we're doing this.
She could, but I didn't give her the chance, so I apologize.
Oh, you didn't give her the chance, all right.
Well, if you will answer this, then I'll, thank you. Go ahead.
All right, thanks. I just wanted to recognize Dr. Zulawaga, who was very instrumental in helping us really pilot the work and call for the need to do this work. So again, that partnership has been incredibly important. And just to clarify the year when the new high school programming will take effect for those cohorts. So we started with Lee and Justice and it will be the 2019 cohort. So the year after this data that we're looking at in those two schools would have had the four-years opportunity to participate.
Right, okay.
And then everybody else in 2020. So we'll go ahead and take the rest of your questions and we'll come back because I want Rich to say a little bit more about what that work looks like as well.
All right, I appreciate that. And I do want to say something that, and Mr. Moon, what he was talking about kind of struck me. I am hearing from some of my schools, and this is why I think the wraparound services are very important, because I think some students, and I don't think, this is what I'm told anecdotally by counselors in a few of my high schools, is that certain of members of this cohort and why we see a low graduation rate are here just for language acquisition services. And it's, they're not being guided, or at least it's not their intent to want to get a high school graduate, a high school diploma. So I'm hearing that from some people. And I think that's something that we need to look into system-wide to ensure that, you know, they're being guided properly and making certain that, you know, maybe a traditional high school is not the best fit for them and making certain that they get their needs met in a different ways. I guess my other thing was quickly now, do we have the total cost for my FCPs ON question that I asked on Thursday night? And then for, as the person who works with APAC, the Young Scholars Model is less of a budgetary question than a program implementation. And do we have, do we have a plan for that to move those forward? Because it's more a way teaching that elementary school how to identify those students, those young scholars. And I don't know if there's budget dollars allocated this year or if it's necessary because it's more of a notation or an identification.
All right, great. So I'm going to work backwards and then we'll end on the issue of high school English learner programming. So starting with young scholars, you're correct, there's not large dollars with implementing the Young Scholars Program, but there are costs and we do need funds to be able to do the work because some professional development does need to happen in the schools so that someone other than the Advanced Academic Resource Teacher fully understands what the Young Scholars Program is really all about and how to do it. But more importantly, there are opportunities for enrichment, kind of going back to Karen Keys-Gamara's question earlier about, you know, how can we create some of these opportunities for enrichment in all of our schools, particularly if you're losing Title I funding? So the Young Scholars Summer School Program is really important and there are funding needs associated with that. But your real, I think, the rest of that question was about, you know, But your real, I think, the rest of that question was about, you know, are we going to be able to implement these programs successfully and how are we going to do that? I feel very confident that we can implement the programs well because we have a good track record of being able to implement the programs. What we never had before was an expectation that those programs be in every one of our schools. It was you could decide at the school level whether or not that was something that you were going to focus time and attention and resources on. And we've said as a leadership team, based on the board's expectation, that young scholars is a program that's in every one of our schools. So with that expectation, the region assistant superintendents and department staff are collaborating to work with principals to figure out how to, how to get these programs into all of our schools. Your question on FCPs ON total costs, I'm going to have to defer that as a next step because we did some work on that, but we haven't been able to get everything verified. And I don't want to give you information that's not correct, so we'll do that as a next step. And then I think we're kind of back to the questions about the high school programming. And a couple of things I would say before I turn it over to Rich, because you had asked questions about, you know, perhaps maybe some of our students aren't accessing the program for the academics as much as the language acquisition. And we do work with students and parents during the registration process to really try to understand what their goals, their educational goals are. And we have different opportunities for students, particularly students that might be a little bit older. GED is an option through the adult high school. We have different options available for students at their base schools. And the students that choose to enroll in, in the base schools, we're working very hard in those classes with those students on academic and career plans, just like we are with all of our students, but really trying to focus through strategies for success classes and things of that nature to really understand where do students see themselves? What are their goals after high school? So I feel pretty confident that that original conversation and process of identifying the right program fit is good, but it doesn't mean that we always get it right or that maybe, you know, maybe that changes for some students once they actually get in and see how difficult it's going to be to graduate within four, or five, or six years. And we need to make sure that we're continuing to work with those students and make sure that they understand that they have other options for completion, perhaps if where they find themselves doesn't seem to be the best fit.
Just a quick comment. First of all, thank you so much for inviting me. This is great to have the opportunity to see the voice from the board because at the end, all of this needs to be translated into action with our principals, our assistant principals, our, our teachers. And thus, I also want to appreciate the incredible focus this year around the strategic plan, the metrics, and the theory of action that has been developed for us because I don't want to call Dr. Presidio the researcher, but he is to an extent, right? He researched the programs that are effective and we are the practitioners. We implement those programs that we think are going to make a significant difference in the schools. So I'm super excited with that theory of action because we believe now, for example, we are talking about access and opportunity, equality tier one, tier two, tier three instruction. How are we going to make sure that a lot of our students, the ones that qualify for young scholarships, that we enroll those kids in those programs that are going to make a difference? And then to see if those programs are really making a difference for our students. But just to answer to your question about the ESOLE programs, I just had the opportunity to visit all the programs at Herndon, Justice, the satellite program that we have at Justice, the program that we have at Plum Center. And while the students, in my conversations with them, what they are asking is for flexibility. And I think that's what these programs bring to them, the opportunity to, most of them have expressed a desire to finish their high school experience. They're just looking for different opportunities to finish their high school experience in different settings and at a completely different time set. And that's what I think these programs are offering them. But I'm going to see with, we can have a conversation and see how I can support the schools in, in your area.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Thank you very much. Ms. Darnett Kopeck, do you want to go, have a go-back?
I still owe her one answer.
One answer, all right.
I wanted, I wanted Rich to provide a little more information on her question about, to the extent that high school programming is in all schools.
Sure, so, so the, the high school programming, the, what we called, I guess, the enhanced high school ESOLE programming a few years ago, is now in all schools. So all schools, now it doesn't look exactly the same in all schools because different schools have different percentages of English learners at their schools. So at schools like Lee and Justice, they have the full gamut of all the courses, you know, Strategies for Success. They begin with English nine and government, and we've started work on courses in math and science at the upper levels for those students. We also have, as you know, additional counselors at, I believe, now eight to 10, eight, eight or nine of our schools that support our English learners. And so not all schools need that. But all schools do have students who come in, and if they're level one, they start with English nine, they start with government, they have all those classes are on the same four-year pathway to graduation at all high schools. If schools need, want to have a Strategies for Success class because they have a need, their students, so they have access to that class. So all schools have access to all the new courses that we developed. And again, some schools don't have the numbers to run, or they may combine class, they may combine students in a Strategies class, or combine students at different grade levels in an English language development class if they need to.
All right, thank you so much. And not at this time, Ms. Evans.
Okay, thank you. I now have Mrs. Strauss for her first turn, and then I have go-bags. Mrs. Strauss.
Okay, great, thank you. And thank you, Dr. Zulawaga, because you began in on exactly what I wanted to know a little more about. Just going back again to our older English language learners, many of them with interrupted education. It sounds to me as though sort of the 18-year-olds and above are, it's about 500 and some students is in my...
That number was with respect to the students that dropped out
Right.
of this graduating class.
Right.
Yeah.
But I'm...
So 501 of the 1,031.
Right. But I would assume that is about, Fabio, is that about right, about the number of, maybe in that bucket? 500 plus?
Of the students that...
Of the older students who are, who have dropped out, who are asking for more flexibility, who are, you know, English learner ones, et cetera. I'm just wondering, what is the, what is the universe of our need here?
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I think that's correct. So again, using this one cohort as, as a representation
Right, exactly.
of, of our students, out of that 1,031 students that dropped out.
Right.
526 of those students were level one or level two.
Right. So, yeah, I'm, I'm going to say that's probably about, about what we're looking at. So then my question in listening to the other options that they may have, because to help them, you know, make their way in life and they need to be employed and they need all these skills. And I think I had missed earlier the expanded programs for residents in this bucket. Obviously, we have adult high school, we've got plain old ESOLE classes, GED.
Right, so we worked as part of the redesign of the adult high school to merge last year, the transitional high school and the adult high school together to consolidate programs for efficiency, but also for effectiveness and create more opportunities for students. So we have the GED program that many of these students were not accessing in the past as an opportunity, as flexibility to try to accelerate high school completion. We have the programming available, three sites around the county, so Justice, Plum, and Herndon.
Right, Herndon is one.
Yeah, and then for students that might choose, to try to complete a diploma within Fairfax, students that would be 18 or over at the time of, time of enrollment have Bryant or Mountain View as opportunities to enroll as well.
Right. And I'm assuming we will not have data on the success of this change and how we offer services for another year, but will we at least, will we get some data at the end of this year?
We will, we, we will. So we'll have a better sense of whether or not we have been more successful in helping more students to complete.
Okay, and then my last question, it has to do really with CTE and apprenticeships and direct partnerships with employment opportunities, et cetera. Does this recrafting of how we serve these folks, does it also include partnerships or working with employment opportunities?
Well, you know, that's an area that we continue to try to work on, but I would say, you know, we're doing things both through our CTE program office. We're also doing things through our Dalton Community Program. The whole discussion from earlier today about, you know, trades for tomorrow are things that I've had conversations with Mr. Plattenberg about. So there are things that we're trying to do right now, but there are many other things and many other steps and actions that we could take and that we need to take. So Ms. Corbett Sanders mentioned some things that we're trying to do with trade associations, professional associations, and there's a lot of additional work that needs to be done in this area.
Right, okay. And I think the last piece is, is again, wraparound services in community, whatever have you. Again, the 500-some young people in this piece, issues with, with food insufficiency, homes, medical care, the rest of that, that's all, are those part of the wraparound services that we are offering in these expanded three programs? To some extent.
Well, again, we haven't invested a lot of new financial resources to create those kind of opportunities. So what I was mentioning earlier is the need to do that, right? The need to develop more of a community schools model where we have those supports and those resources in place, where we've been able to add the additional bilingual counselor. That counselor has been able to try to work with those families and provide them with additional supports. But that's one person with one small component of, of his or her job. So it's an area that I'm arguing that we need to continue to look at, try to figure out how we could invest in, but not just from the FCPs side, but also from the county side, community partner side, and private partners.
Right, and I also presume that for, for some of these individuals, they are sort of tied in now as, because there may be younger school-aged children in their families, they may be living with extended relatives. So it isn't as though, one would not necessarily assume that these 500 people are all out there on their own. They may be already part of other groups of people who are receiving other services that help to get them drawn in. I would assume that that's, okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Strauss. I have four go-bags and then we will go to next steps. I have Ms. Corbett Sanders to be followed by Ms. McLaughlin.
I'm going to try to be very brief. First, I love the appendices. Great data really does inform how you can read the rest of the report, so I appreciate that. One question I have is regarding the linkage of the availability of pre-K to students that if they don't have pre-K, is there a higher instance of them being designated as students with disabilities or in need of specialized services? And if so, can you give us a bit more detail on that? Secondly, on page 59, there's a great chart which compares the success of the different cohorts in AP versus IB. And I was very impressed to see that with the, with some of our traditionally underrepresented populations, they actually have a much higher success rate in the IB programming. And so my question is, why aren't we doing more to encourage that? Because we do know that those IB schools or those IB programs are typically in schools that do have a very diverse population. And so what can we do to encourage more kids to get into them? Although I will say that the students with disabilities have more of a challenge in the IB versus the AP, according to this chart on page 59. And then going to page 39, where for future considerations, and you talk about the various supports, that we should consider putting in place to, to address or eliminate the achievement gaps. And I think those are all great. However, one thing that you don't talk about there specifically is greater access to the community programming and bringing in perhaps the resources from One Fairfax, the faith-based alumni, or faith-based community, as well as one area, I would love to hear your view about the impact of concentration of poverty in individual schools so that we have a number of students who are driven past some schools to get to other schools and we have concentration of poverty. Is there something that you would recommend from our discussions about the makeup of our individual schools?
All right, thank you very much. So your first question was about a link between whether or not students had participated in preschool and likelihood for identification for special education. So I don't believe we have any of that data available, so that would be something that we would have to see if it were possible to collect that data or not.
That would be helpful.
Okay, so we could do that as a next step if that was something that you wanted us to look at. The next question was around, you know, AP versus IB. And, and the first thing is, is just to clarify, the information on page 59 is just taking the board-approved metric and splitting it out so that you could see how AP and IB look because we do know that those are very different programs. And, you know, if you don't have one of those programs in your school, you might not be familiar with it. So we wanted to provide that information in a more disaggregated way. In terms of getting more students enrolled in the courses, that's part of what I was saying earlier. Now that that's a board-approved metric in terms of participation rates that we're asking schools to look at, we think that that's something that we can continue to drive the diversity and the equality in terms of access. And then we need to make sure that our performance rates stay high as well through supports and scaffolds that we would provide to students. So that is something that we're talking about at the leadership team, working with schools to try to get more students into those courses. The access...
If we could have as a next step, a plan from you all as to how you're going to achieve that more, more students in those programs and ensuring that they have the supports to succeed.
We, we could include information like that. The next question was access to community programming and the need to include that in future considerations. Again, if you wanted us to amend the report to include that in there, that, we'd be happy to do that. As I mentioned on Thursday, that wasn't something that I, that I had included, but I obviously feel that it's very important, so that is something that we could include. And just with respect to the future considerations, those are not necessarily an exhaustive list of everything that the board ought to be thinking about. Those were things that we thought were some of the most important things that were really kind of within the realm and scope of the purview of the board, that some of which might have funding implications and some of which might be policy considerations. And then lastly, you asked me for some thoughts on issues related to issues in research around concentration of poverty and the impact of achievement. And I would say we do have an internal study, again, that our program evaluation team at the time, now termed the Office of Research and Strategic Improvement, did called the Tipping Point Study. And that particular study looked at the predictable impact on poverty, of poverty on student achievement. And you can kind of see when you get to certain thresholds, the predictable amount and rate by which student achievement decreases in schools. And, you know, there's a lot of different opinions about why that may be the case, but I think it's important information for us to consider, to look at and talk about as a school system. Again, this whole issue around Title I schools and what's the right threshold and percentage to, to set at for Title I funding certainly is tied to this. School boundaries certainly is tied to this issue. And we know that it's important that schools have not just the resources that we provide as the school system, but their internal community provides to the school as well. So the supports, the resources that families bring into the school are incredibly important as well. So we do have an internal study that could be referenced, that the board could, could reference.
So can I suggest that page 39 be amended to include a relook at the Tipping Point Study, a expansion to include those community, those county resources that are available? I'm just concerned that as written, it looks like, hey, we can handle this with just these budget aspects, and I think we need to be a bit more...
Are you asking for a next step here?
Yeah, my next step is to be more, to add additional considerations, to include looking at the Tipping Point Study, looking at county resources that can be brought to bear and looking at the, you know, for wraparound services and just being more expansive or at a minimum amending the language here so it is very clear that these are just a few suggestions versus a comprehensive plan.
Sure, thank you.
All right, I have four go-bags now. Ms. McLaughlin to be followed by Ms...
Ms. Evans?
Yes.
Could I just share something?
Absolutely.
Because so many board members have touched on it and Sloan ended on it on the yester, yesterday. And, and I know, you know, again, partnering, a next step for the board to think about is how do we take the work of the school board and the board of supervisors around One Fairfax? They're developing a strategic plan. We brought you to a meeting, you know, and there was a little bit of feedback, wow, this meeting was more about the county, they're starting their strategic plan and their survey. But think about the power of looking when we have strategic plan metrics from the county.
we have strategic plan metrics from the county, when we talk about access and opportunity gaps from the county, and merge that with some of the school, right? There are access and opportunity gaps in transportation, in housing, in pre-K. That's when this power of One Fairfax can really lift off. That two boards are going through that same lens to look at, you've got to have healthy communities, and you have to have healthy and strong schools. You have both, and you've, you've reached the win-win. So I think we can do more of that as staff to tie in. And I think both boards can do more of that in their conversations that they have, that you all have with, with the Board of Supervisors too. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Brabran. Ms. McLaughlin.
So following up on my first go-around, I'm just trying to think broadly about what we do at the end of what is clearly a compressed two-hour conversation on, you know, one year's worth of work, on the staff telling us where we are on our goal, goal one, on student success. And I'll reiterate that I don't think two hours is sufficient. But what worries me is what Dr. Brabran said earlier, which is, so staff is taking, and staff meaning the superintendent of the 10th largest school system in the country, is taking direction from this board about the metrics, and that's what they're going to report on. And, you know, I welcome anybody to remind me on how we got to these metrics here, who recommends them, and then how, you know, I know we adopt them. But I, I just really am worried about where we are, because the board has a finite amount of time, we're part-time positions, and we're relying on Dr. Brabran and your team of experts to say to us, this is how we're targeting student success. And so we're going to be faced with getting, going to the dais, voting on this report, and communicating out to the public that, hey, this, this was our strategic focus in this past year. And these metrics, for anyone who actually knows things about data and analysis and research, it's either going to reflect badly on the board, it's going to reflect badly on the superintendent and leadership team, or reflects badly on all of us. So I'm just going to drive home the point that we either realize what we have in front of us today, and whether it's the next step is to say, all right, well, Dr. Brabran, you're correct, we want to be transparent. And you're hearing a lot of us citing the appendix part as having the meat to the work that you guys are doing. Really good work in terms of data gathering, but we're not benefiting from your team's analysis about what we do next. So there's a lot of data information here, but not, not necessarily, what are we going to do going forward then into the F20 school year to, to get better at closing these gaps? I don't want to just keep reporting year and year, here's where we are. It's, what are we actually going to do because of what this tells us? And I do think that so much of what's in the appendix is really what we need to be focusing on. So in my 29 seconds left, I guess what I'd say is, I know, Dr. Brabran, you and your team are dedicated to transparency. I don't doubt that for a second. But some people who have been trying to build trust in our system are going to look at the appendix and say, they buried the lead. Because where the real information is in the appendix, again, I'm not saying that. I was prefacing to you, I know what you're trying to do. But as a result, I think we need to bring the, the more robust appendix information to the front of this report and do that kind of robust analysis.
Ms. McLaughlin, is, is your next step to have the superintendent bring us back recommendations for revisions to the metrics in this report and provide, and have a conversation about that in the fall?
I, I worry a little bit about the fall is really too late. Even Dr. Brabran said he'd like to see bringing us this report, student success, more timely to, they wrap up a school year's worth of data, and, well, I know September would be enough, but-
So what is your, what is your next step here?
Well, we can review the next step. My next step is, we, this board should not leave today without at least saying, we'll have to have another work session to say, how do we improve upon the, the metrics for going into the next year's report? Because I'm just letting you all know, I can't vote yes anymore on student success reports, out of fairness to staff and Dr. Brabran, because if I'm being told it was my, you know, our board's collective responsibility that these metrics look like they do, then I'm saying, we'd better get some better metrics in place, not the ones that we have in the body of the report.
All right, we'll consider that as a next step then. I have Ms. Keys-Gamarra to be-
If you wanted to say something.
I, I do feel strongly, I need to say this to this board. We didn't have these metrics when I got here, folks, and I'm putting them in. We met two-by-two last fall, we met in the spring, we brought it to you this fall. In the fall, you didn't like all the metrics. We spent time in two-by-two in the winter, and I brought it to you now this spring. If you don't like all of it, we can take feedback and elevate things out of the appendices, up into the focus, and take some things that you feel like we've checked that box. But from the beginning, I have said, I wanted to take a great strategic plan foundation and begin to build in the accountability that some of you felt was missing, and I'm still committed to doing that. So I feel like I've been working hard to try to get all of you on the loop. And if, if I've miscommunicated or not done that the correct way, I'm willing to take feedback. But I absolutely believe I have been working with the board individually and in groups to bring the strategic plan in place and send a direction. You heard a nugget from Dr. Presidio, again, just, just saying, our school strategic plan was not aligned to the strategic plan that the board had passed. Now, just got to tell you, in a large organization, until you have the individual units aligned with the same strategic targets and focus as the, the overall organization, you're not going to move the needle as powerfully as, as you would like. So we're in the process of doing that. I do think there's some metrics probably, and again, you can just give us feedback that we can lift off. We don't have to bring them back again in the fall. And if there's a few things here in these appendices that you guys among yourselves, or you just send to us, we can get the top, like, all of you want this one put in, we'll be glad to do it. But I want to keep that partnership going forward. I'm proud of the work we've been doing on the strategic plan. You all led the country and the Commonwealth in creating the strategic plan to even go in this direction. So I want to keep that positive momentum going, and, and reflect positively on the work that we can do together. So I, I'm more than willing to take the ideas of, of things that can be taken off and some things that could be added on. And I want to continue to partner with you and the rest of your colleagues.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Brabran. I have Ms. Keys-Gamarra to be followed by Ms. Darnett Kovacs.
First, Dr. Brabran, I do realize, I think the board does realize, we've done a lot of work. It's just that we're, we're hungry for progress, I guess. It's sort of like giving your kids dessert and they just want to eat the whole cake. But anyway, I'm going to ask for just a few, a bit more information. The Bridge to K results, I don't know if we have any data showing us, you know, before, after, or kids with and without, what difference that has made in terms of investing in that program, even though it seems to be reasonably priced. We have the, I think in the latter part of your appendix, I didn't see a combination of students with disability, disabilities and their on-time graduation rate with any other group. I'm, I'm, I'm a little bit hungry for more data on, that can lead to metrics for that particular group. I'm feeling that that community, at least some of the feedback I'm receiving, is feeling a bit left out. And I'm also wondering, I, I'm hearing about a lot of really positive work that Project Momentum is doing, particularly in some of our Title I schools. And I'm wondering, in terms of the specifics that Ms. McLaughlin was asking for, if perhaps getting more information on what title, what Project Momentum has done, may help us to identify what some of those metrics should be. I don't know if you want to have them here, we can make it a next step. I know this meeting is getting long, but I'd just kind of throw that out there as a possibility to explore. Still leaving seconds on the clock.
All right, so, very good question. So we do have information in the report on the Bridge to K results. And I don't know if Maura has been able to pull up that specific page. I was trying to listen to the questions and, and pull up the page at the same time. So I haven't located that page yet. So when she's found that, she'll buzz in and she'll help provide some of the information that's already in the report. And then you had asked for information on students with disabilities and comparing, I think, graduation rates in a similar fashion to what we did for economically disadvantaged and students who are English learners. That's additional analysis that we could do again. So that would be something that we, we could provide. And then you had questions about strategies with respect to Project Momentum. And, you know, a few of the things that I had talked about, that the board has done really good work in supporting that initiative, was allowing us to expand the capacity of those teams to include specialists who work with English learners and work with students with disabilities in each of our regions. So to have those specialists in each of our regions has been really, really important. We could provide additional information on Project Momentum as a next step, or if Mr. Greenfelder preferred to do that as a next step, we could do that. Additionally, I would say there are some things that are not necessarily Project Momentum, but are related to Project Momentum around closing these gaps a little bit. I think that sometimes maybe we've left out of our conversation, that again, the board supported additional investments and additional resources in educational specialists to support equity in each of our regions, right? So again, those folks are working with the region assistant superintendents, and the Project Momentum teams in each of the regions to not just look at the academics, but also look at the family engagement, the cultural responsiveness of our work in each of the regions, the equity leads that we put into each of our buildings, so the stipends for the equity leads in each of our buildings. For the first time, we hired a program manager for closing the achievement gap. So this is the first time that we've had that position in seven years that I've been here, that can really coordinate services across different programs, many of the programs that we talked about today. So early literacy initiatives, working with family and community, parent liaisons and supports, trying to strengthen and make those connections. We now have somebody that can start to do some of that work. So this board has shown, I think, a strong commitment to equity and put a lot of additional pieces in. And all of this work is being coordinated and collaborated in ways that I haven't seen in the seven years that I've been here. So again, all of those things give me a lot of optimism for where we can go as a system. So I'm going to go back to Maura and see if she might have found that page number.
So you can find that on page 42. It talks about, so we partner with Oregon State to do this research on children that attend Bridge to K. We do, we administer assessments on the first day of Bridge to K, and on the last day of a random sample of children who attend Bridge to K. And what we have seen is that children, so we, there's a early academic assessment that's given, and there's also a self-regulation assessment that is given directly to students. And what we see is that pre and post, there's approximately a six-month gain for children in their self-regulation in that three-week period. For the academic, the early academic pieces, we see about a two-month gain in applied problems, and about a two-month gain in early literacy, things around letter identification. And then we go back and assess them again at the end of the first quarter, and we see about a 12-month gain in that self-regulation, and about a 10 to eight-month gain on those early academic skills.
Great. So let's let Dr. Brabran get into the conversation as well.
I, I think, I think something that you're saying is, is good. Sometimes what happens, we end up presenting the report and research, I'll be, I'll be quick, how to bring practitioners in front of you and let, let you get a sense of the work. We could bring an OSS team with Mark and Francisco and the equity leads and the equity specialists, and really let you know how we've been responding to the data, and what we've been doing in the schools around both equity and the work with Project Momentum. And, and I'll work with the chair leadership and see about setting up a roundtable where you could either do that on the same day and hear from the OSS practitioners, and then the equity practitioners. Because I think that, that's where it comes home, like, what are we doing? We're not just sitting around staring at charts. We're out in schools with teams actively working to intervene in schools, both for equity and to address gaps that we see in schools. So I think we need to tell that story better than what we're telling it here at this table. And I'll be glad to work with the team and bring some, some folks in to do just that very soon.
If, if I can use my remaining seconds to follow up on that, because I think that's where I was going, to say, we need to be able to tell the community, we are investing in these things, and this is what we've, the, the data is showing we can achieve. And we set a metric, because that data supports this work, we can then say, for example, and I'm just throwing this out, Bridge to K yields certain results, so why do we have a metric with respect to that? Do we have a metric with respect to educational specialists? And if Project Momentum is the tool that we see those kinds of, or a combination thereof, then that's the kind of thing that this board can put their finger on and say, well, we, we know we're trying to close the gap, we've been saying that for years, but now we've identified data and, and a tool that says, shows us how to get there, and this is how we're going to do it. And we can look at it again to see if that makes any sense. For me, that's the kind of practical analysis that I really want to see.
Okay.
Before I finish, I want to make sure we repeat something that I'm not sure was noted from Thursday, our discussion at the board, and that is, these aspirational goals. Again, I do not, I am not comfortable with different goals for different groups. I'm not the only one on this board that said that. So, but that is, again, another message that I don't want to, to, to send to the community. I think I just used the six seconds I paid for.
So I've got a couple-
You have three more, though.
So I, I've got a couple follow-ups, but I believe Dr. Ivy and Dr. Zulawaga has some comments as well.
No, I was just going to add that when we bring this information to the board with the Office of School Support Team, I think it will also be important that we have region staff and school staff to be a part of the story, so we can tell the whole narrative. And I also want to add that while the OSS team is going in and supporting, it's in conjunction with several of our other departments, so we can really create a robust story and, and profile for everyone to understand how we're supporting our schools.
Right. And just, just briefly, in addition, Dr. Brabran, we could consider inviting some of our principals. When I, for example, reflect on the work that is currently happening, and it's just not there, I can go on, on multiple examples of the work that is happening, for example, at Bradock Elementary, and the Bridge to K, and the impact that, that Bridge to K has created there. But the other day, we just had the opportunity, with the practitioners, to go and visit a school in a completely different region from my region, which is Coates Elementary, and the transformation at Coates Elementary. So perhaps, when we talk about these programs, but when it also, I, we should consider inviting the practitioners who can give you and share with all of us the, the, the real evidence and how those schools have been transformed. That could also help us in, as a division, as we move, gain momentum on how to expand this work at a larger scale.
So just, just real fast to finish up, I just wanted to make sure that, because a couple board members have, have made some really good points about the need for additional analysis and better understanding of the work that's in progress and underway. So I just wanted to call attention to the fact that we have a new report template that we're using with all four of the strategic plan goals. And all of them contain an analysis on the actions that were taken to drive the particular performance metrics. But as I mentioned on Thursday, the board adopted these performance metrics in March of 2019. So this is a report on 1718. So there's not like one-to-one linear alignment between these things. But in future reports, that's going to be more evident. So it's not as evident or as robust, I don't think, as any of us would like. But that's exactly what we're working towards. And there is information, both on the PowerPoint that I presented on Thursday and in the report, that talks about the return on investment. So just as Ms. Keys-Gamarra was saying, you know, if we tried a particular program, what kind of impact did it have? So you see information here at a very high level, more detailed information is in the report. And then the report also has information on work that's in progress under each of the three desired outcomes. So this is more work at the division level, high-level things, resources, professional development, supports. And then, as Fabio said, when we actually get into those specific things that you want to know more about, like if it's Bridge to K, having teachers, having principals here would be a real benefit to have those kind of conversations. So I just want folks to know that, that we're, we're moving, I think, in a good direction towards better analysis. And over time, I think it's, it's going to be more robust.
Thank you. Just a time check, we're 40 minutes over our proposed time. I do have four more go-backs. And I would ask everyone to be as succinct as possible, so we have plenty of time to look through, in particular, the next steps. And I, I apologize, Mrs. Schultz, I skipped over you, so it's now your turn.
Okay, so there was a go-back, or a question I had from the beginning, which was, how come the, the college metric is no longer a metric? And can we put it back? So, so I have- So, so I have, I don't, again, I'll, I don't like, I don't like the rules because this, this impede, this is the most important stuff we do, and we're impeded from actually having a comprehensive conversation with staff and with each other. So we've, again, hamstrung ourselves. How long till the UVA longitudinal study on the sort of resilience of the benefit of the pre-K? How long till that longitudinal study brings back any data? The iReady, do you have any idea on diagnoses? What percentage or what number of diagnoses we're getting into earlier? I know it takes time, and you're working on reducing that time offenders, but we're actually, I, I think, I believe that this is going to save us time down the road, and certainly remediation, which saves us money and saves kids frustration. Students with disabilities graduation rate, I'm sorry, I have, I'm, I find it impossible to believe that's 92%. Somebody's going to have to show me how it's 92% when our student achievement is like, I mean, you can't almost tell the difference between the, the student achievement line and the axis. So that's, somebody's going to have to explain that to me. And what is the measure, this is kind of a double, a double question. What is the measure for success, for strategies for success? How do we know? And, and I'm a parent, I'm, I'm not sure anybody else has had them, but I'm a parent who's had a student for all four years of high school in strategies for success, so I wonder how you're determining that strategies for success is in fact a success? And then the question of public-private partnership on the pre-K slots, I would like to know how we can advance that. And then my last comment is, is that this is the most important work that the board does. It is, this is the most comprehensive data that we've gotten. It is the, finally, I mean, it's seven years in, and I feel like we're finally actually getting data in context, and we're not giving ourselves the time, because we're not being strategic with how we work as a board. We're not giving us, ourselves the time to actually work with this data, which is the most important work that we have to do. But I want to extend my thanks to you, because getting things like that heat map, et cetera, those are the things that show us visually what the problem is, and the data shows us in context so that if we spend our time wisely, we would be more strategic.
So I'm going to try to go through these relatively quickly, and if you want more answers or in a different format, please just let me know, either here at the table or offline. The UVA longitudinal study, we'd, we should have comprehensive information on the outcomes in about two years. But again, if you wanted to do something as a board for an internal update, kind of a progress check, we could confer with the university to see if they'd be able to provide us a progress check. You asked about the iReady, the percent of students that were able to identify that might have skill gaps by using iReady, identifying them earlier. I'd like to defer that as the next step, because I have a rough idea, but I would rather give you the accurate information.
Including things like dyslexia, et cetera, potential?
Yeah. The students with disabilities graduation rate, that might be best discussed one-on-one, offline. The measure for success for strategies for success, a lot of that is qualitative information, to be honest with you, in terms of feeling like when we're talking with students that they feel that they are getting study skills, organizational skills, you know, computer skills, as Ms. Evans talked about. A lot of that's qualitative information from the students. I think it's hard to say that it results in a tangible grade impact, but the class that I was particularly talking about strategies for success was for the English learners, and I think you might have been talking about for students with disabilities. So again, I'd want Ms. Johnson's team to weigh in on that, but that's how we talk about it for English learners. And then the public-private partnerships, if I understand that correctly, it's having the system purchase available seat space in, in private providers. And I think if that was a policy decision that the board wanted to pursue, that's something that we could work on. So that's kind of what we would need as staff, is to know that that was something that there was available budget for and policy approval for, so.
Okay. Can you just, on the, on the students with disabilities graduation rate, were you meaning the six-year graduation rate with the give from the state or for, or four-year?
I think I was looking at the four-year.
I, I, boy, I don't really want to talk about that offline. I, I don't know how, I don't know how with the achievement data that we get in our Goal One report, how, how is it possible that we're 92% graduation on time?
I think our Director of Student Testing has some information that will help with this.
So I can give a very basic explanation as to what data goes into that graduation rate. The on-time graduation rate for students with disabilities, as with English learners allows additional time, which means through their age of education, so age 21, for students with disabilities, so long as they're staying in school, they would have that additional time to complete. Additionally, it recognizes any state board-approved diploma. So a Applied Studies diploma, Modified Standard Diploma, various other options besides our Standard Diploma and Advanced Studies Diplomas are available and do count toward this graduation rate, and we have a very high success rate with our students with disabilities achieving those diplomas.
I, I do believe the nut there is, is that that, it's fair to tell the board to differentiate that, which is long what I've been asking in the Goal One report, is differentiating that for us to understand how many of our students with disabilities are graduating four years on time, or how many are having to have.
Mrs. Schultz, would you like that as a next step to answer that question?
Absolutely, absolutely. On the diplomas, on how many take six years or till 21 or?
That can be a next step.
Just so that you know that I actually have heard you on that in the past, that's why we did the disaggregation by disability type for SOLs, and it was my oversight to not have the graduation rates in there. So I, I have heard that request before, and we're happy to do that as the next step.
Ms. Darnett Kofex?
Thank you. Ms. Corbett Sanders touched upon the tipping point, and you made it a next step, so we'll see what it looks like when we come up there. I think that's something that we've had consistent struggles with, with schools that are well beyond the tipping point, particularly some schools that certain of us represent. I saw in the New York Times, and then Ms. Evans sent it around to all of us, if you haven't had the chance, there was a report from UCLA and Penn State. And basically, that survey, and again, these are surveys but from two reputable, you know, state school universities, that schools are not becoming more integrated, but in some cases are becoming intensely segregated. I experienced that in some of my schools. And so I guess what I would like is, when you do a tipping point study, or when we, we do our own analysis, what, I would, want to make sure there's national models out there that, that, that show how they've, you know, addressed this. But what do you do, what are obviously best practices when it comes to socioeconomic resegregation? And NSBA had a couple sessions on this, and they were very courageous conversations you would have to have, because what do you do when you can't boundary out of resegregation? What do you do? You know, those models that were listed in this article, as well as the NSBA presentations were magnet programs, as well as busing. So those are big courageous conversations, and I would think any tipping point study that would look, that we would do or have conversation on would look at those things. I support perhaps adding Bridge to K. to the list of our future considerations, because as I spoke about it at, on Thursday's work session, that's something that was a county school partnership many years ago, when I sat on the Child Care Advisory Council, and it started with like seven to nine schools all the way back then. I see we're all the way up to 80, 80-something, right? Now schools with Bridge to K. But I, I would like it in totality of all of our schools and something for the board to look at so that doesn't fall off of our radar. And for all of those, I, I think I just want to make a real quick comment on pre-K. You know, pre-K was a county program, and it is now a school-county program, but I think the Board of Supervisors has known for the past eight years about the intense benefits, and there has still not been adequate funding for that. So I just want to talk about that, because a lot of times, now, we've been adding more classrooms than the county has through our, our programming, and I think if, in a true one Fairfax partnership, we really have to look back at that mix and say, where that funding's going to come from, particularly in light of year after year of data about the true benefits and what that, and how that saves money in the end to our school system and our county.
So great comments. I do want to follow up on a couple of them. The tipping point study, just to clarify, I was not suggesting that we convene and conduct a new tipping point study. I was recommending that maybe we at least provide the previous version that was provided to the board as a next step. You could look at that and then see if there was additional discussion that might be necessary, but I think you make some really good points with respect. Leedy, did you want to join us on that? Okay. I think you make some really good points about what, what can we do with respect to racial resegregation? And, and I am, I am familiar with the article that you mentioned, and since you mentioned that article, I also mentioned that there's actually a book that was written recently called The Color of Law, that takes an even more holistic look at this particular issue. So board members and community members might be interested in looking at that. So I'm going to bring Leedy into the conversation before you, I talk about your other items.
Okay. So we are actually in the process right now of finishing up an updated version of the tipping point, so that should be available and be released to you or disseminated to you relatively soon, I would say, within about a month. Within a month. Great.
Well, that is fantastic. I wasn't aware of that. So thank you very much for being here and helping with that. Bridge to K. is mentioned in the board considerations for additional funding. No, no, it's, there's a lot of things that are listed there, right? So I just wanted to underscore that we do believe on the part of the leadership team that that should be an additional funding consideration for the board. And then on your last point about county partnerships, first of all, thank you to you and Ms. McLaughlin and others who've been working on this for at least the seven years that I've known each of you with the county. Remember, we have the new Equitable School Readiness Plan that really talks about school system partnerships with the County Office for Early Childhood, and that might be something that the board might be interested in discussing with school staff and county staff at some point in the future to talk more about how we can even be more effective and efficient in our service delivery and our collaboration. Because that plan is supposed to talk about how we actually get to expansion, so. Thank you.
Thank you. I am going to have my go-back, hopefully fairly briefly. Thank you, Ms. Darnett Kofex, for bringing up the resegregation issue. I do think that this is one of the top areas of concern that we are going to have to address. I just had a conversation with Dr. Braybrand about it recently, and I, I will say it's, it's socioeconomic resegregation. It's not just racial, it's socioeconomic, and we do need to find ways to address it. I've been collecting articles, and that's, we, I will look forward to the tipping point study and what, what new information we, we have from that, what updated information. Two other points, I have one question, which is about the, looking at the success of the newcomers program that we started at Justice and Lee High School. Remind me when the, have we been, are we at year four now?
So the graduating class of 2019 will be the first class at Lee and Justice. We had the opportunity to participate in the four-year program.
Okay. So I guess that's, that's where I was going with this, and presumably you will then be able to give us an assessment with how successful the program was in terms of that cohort, those that started in, in freshman year and, and hopefully all graduated this year. So I will very much look forward to see, you know, what our conclusions are on that. I had brought a forum topic, and I, I only bring it up now, it's about food security. And the, the chair suggested I bring it up as, as part of caring culture, which I will do, but I just wanted to mention this to the board, because this is something that is of deep concern in my area and in many other areas, actually, I guess in all areas, frankly, and in all areas of our county, as to how we are dealing with food insecurity among our students. And I, I mentioned it, Dr. Presidio, because you mentioned the part about how important it is. It's not just what we do in the schools, it's what's happened outside. And I know we have so many programs, we have free and reduced meals, we now have after-school. It's great that we have after-school snacks at some, and meals at some of our schools, that's fabulous. My question, and I will bring it up as part of caring culture, but how coordinated is it and how extensive is it, and how much coverage do we have, and where are the gaps for our students, whether it's on a snow day or whether it's in summer? So just a heads up to, to all of you that I do plan to bring that up. And, oh, lastly, on the, on the targets, I, I do think that we need to revisit that and, and find a way to have, have it be clear that, that, that our targets, we, we want all of our kids to be succeeding. Our, our true targets are 100%, of course. And, but I, I, I agree with Ms. Keys-Gamar that we need to find a better way of, of assessing that. And with that, I have Ms. Keys-Gamar for the last go-back, and then we will go to next steps.
I'm just going to add to the list of things that I think we might be able to delineate to be clearer. And I, I think the, on page 12, it talks about percentage, let's see, percent of students who demonstrate proficiency in algebra, that whole page, I think it's algebra and then honors classes and that sort of thing. I would like that break down by region, because if we have distinctions in, in that, then again, it helps us to set goals. So pages 12, 13, and 14, I'd look at those as possible differences in the regions, and then perhaps connecting those to targets. Nobody hit time for me, and I'm just talking. Okay. And then I'm wondering if one of our targets should also include our mental health assessments based on our surveys, as well as trailers and the eliminations of those sorts of things, because I know the parents are very concerned about, is it, I must have missed it. Okay. All right. So those are the two things that I wanted to, I'm, I'm only going to throw those out as, as possibilities. If they're in there, then that's fine. I, I didn't see it.
All right. So, oh, did you have a response to that, or can we go to next steps?
Why don't we go to next steps?
Okay. Madam Clerk, could you pull up our next steps, and then we can take a look at this? Ms. Corbett Sanders, if you want to look at the first one and see if that reflects what you wanted to say? Is everyone all right with that? Any concerns? Okay, we'll go into this with Palchek.
Dr. Presidio, if you want to decide what's the best way to give that information, I think there are many benefits of it, so.
So do you need a next step? Or do you want me to work with you offline?
Sure. Either way, whatever works.
Well, I'm not exact, yeah. How about we work on something offline, and we can provide it to the whole board?
Well, the next step can be to work.
Yeah, and we'll provide it to the whole board.
All right. Ms. McLaughlin?
I mean, Dr. Braybrand, you, you listened to all of this. It's not exactly how I would phrase it, but if, hopefully you understand what I'm trying to capture, which is, can we really ensure that the key metrics that the reports can be based on, that you guys are reporting on, that you're going to be doing the analysis on, are, are the metrics where we're actually focused on, the gaps and the lags in achievement as opposed to some of the metrics that are in there?
Yep. I, I love that. I just, what I'd love is just feedback, the board consent to me, you know, or however you'd want to do it, compiling it from colleagues, some that you'd like to see dropped and some that you'd like to see added. And then I can bring those forward, and then, you know, right? Instead of just one, it's getting, which ones do you want to see removed that have been on there? Or you're just saying, the board would need to decide right now, if we're going with this, that anything that was 95% or more, we're just going to remove from the strategic plan? Do, I mean?
Well, Mrs., well, first of all, Ms. Strauss had a comment.
Okay, well, before, before Ms. Strauss comments, I'd like to, I mean, Ms., Dr. Braybrand just said something, which is not exactly what I was saying, so.
Okay, and I'm just clarification.
So, yeah, so I, I, I think instead, what I'm trying to capture here, and this is for colleagues to understand, is it's not going to get done today, so whether we're going to need to have a work session very soon before you guys begin the next report is that we've, I think as a board, we need to identify and say, these metrics where we're at 90% and above, they can be moved to the appendix, and what you bring forward are the ones where we have the deeper gaps.
So let me do it this way. I'll take the feedback that we, we'll, staff's heard all this feedback, then I'll bring you a proposal of what we would move.
feedback. Then I'll bring you a proposal of what we would move to the appendix and what from the appendix we would move forward, and the board can respond to that.
That's fine. I just want my colleagues to understand, this isn't about us driving this. They are the operational leaders and the operational experts. We expect you guys to come to us and say, this isn't strategic. These metrics, we can move these. I want your best thinking. So, then as a board, we can advise you. There's no other role than for us to advise you.
Absolutely.
And then govern you.
Well, so, let's revise this next step then to reflect what you just said.
So, okay. So, the next step is for, please have
The superintendent?
Superintendent and staff review existing metrics at 90% and above.
90% and above.
Above, correct. And...
Well, rather than 90 to 95.
Okay. That's, that's fine. Yeah. Just 90% above. Ms. Evans, correct. 90% above. And provide a recommendation to the board on revised next, revised metrics for the FY20 report.
Well, they are the metrics.
You have to achieve the 90 to 95%. You just don't need to be back on those. You want to refocus it on...
You want your focus for the next report on those area where the deficits exist. And so, that's...
I'm actually going to, I appreciate Ms. Corbett Sanders, you're trying to figure out what I meant by it. What I meant by it is, no, I don't want to see another report where a metric that they're reporting on, we're at 90% and above. That can go in the appendix as, here's where, but the metric is supposed to be, what are you strategically focused on that we've got to target and bring improvement to student success? And right now, many of the metrics in the body of the report where your analysis is, those aren't strategic because we're, that's not where the gaps are for student success.
So, does that reflect your proposal, Ms. McLaughlin, the way it's written now?
Well, after it says 90% above, and then the word "and" needs to be inserted, so it's say, and provide a recommendation to the board on revised metrics for the FY20 report. And that's the correct date, right?
Can I just add, could I say revised metrics for summary in the FY20 report? So that we're not necessarily, we might keep some metrics that we'd still want to have the board see in the appendices.
So, for presentation.
For presentation in the FY20 report.
And Mrs. Strauss has been trying to comment on this. Go ahead.
Well, yeah. I mean, again, the report, your report is on your metrics. So, I don't want it to just be about your presentation today. It's your report and the analysis. Yeah, I understand. My concern is our metrics.
I think the bottom line is, we, the board passed some strategic plan metrics associated with each goal. Is it simply about what gets reported in the presentation? Or do you want some metrics removed from the strategic plan and some metrics that are in the appendices added to the strategic plan? And I'm more than willing to have that conversation. All I'm saying is, I might want, if we're going to do...
I'm not asking you to remove any metrics from the report.
Okay.
Whether, what ends up in the appendix, which if you're 90% above, put that in the appendix, which is what I said initially, and bring forward where we have the actual gaps. There's no reason in the body and the heart of your report, you're reporting on the things that we're already where we need, we're already at 90% and above.
So, if we could on this, then, if you're willing, only if you're willing, review existing metrics at 90% and place in the report appendices.
I'm going to simplify it. That's why I said, and provide a recommendation on revised metrics. You may say, I don't want to revise any of these metrics. Thanks, Ms. McLaughlin. We like what we got. Or you may say, this is great. Let's make them our best.
With the spirit of what you shared.
Yep.
If I could suggest, say, on revised metrics and presentation, because it may be, you want to take it out of one section and put it in another, take it out. Would that work? Okay. And now, Mrs. Strauss.
Thank you. A strategic plan is a public document that is used for the school board to be strategic. And that's very important. So, I understand exactly where it's coming from. However, it is also very important that the community easily finds where we actually are succeeding and then where our challenges are and where the school board needs to focus its resources or what have you. Because what we don't want to do is to have it look as though it's always a zero-sum game. Because then we lose the support of the broader community. And I know that's nobody's intent, but you have to be careful that a public, a thick public document as a strategic plan is important reading for all residents, all taxpayers, everyone, everyone who sends a child to school, or anyone who cares about their property values, any of those things. So, it's how it is presented is important because there are really two audiences. One is the school board that has to focus on their strategy. I agree with you absolutely, Ms. McLaughlin. But we have a broader audience that is just as important. So, we have to be careful.
So, are you supporting the language that we had, have the superintendent bring recommendations to us on the metrics?
Well, I think the superintendent, I think they would like to have the opportunity to kind of take a look at this.
And they're going, and they're going, and they're going to come back, they're going to come back with recommendations. So...
Right. Which is, which is fine. But I understand. I just need to remind us. We have several audiences that are very, very important with the strategic plan. It's not just us. That's fine.
So, with that, if everyone, if there's consensus on number three, we'll go to number four. Mr. Moon? Let's read that. On-time graduation rate for SIFs, number of students in the cohort. Does every, anyone have any concerns or questions about that? All right. We'll go on to number five. Ms. Keys-Gamarra, does that capture what you were looking for?
Not completely, but it's got the gist of it. And I actually think with Ms. Schultz's permission, I may be able to add in that because I was trying to look at not just students with disabilities, but the overlap with two, with other groups. And then also, I think we need to break out what that graduation rate is depending on the criteria we're using, which is what Ms. Schultz mentioned.
I have a, I have a further next step down below. I think...
Is that something that we need to combine, Ms. Schultz, or not?
Well, that's what I was saying. It all deals with, it all deals with students with disabilities, if, whatever you're comfortable with. But I'm certainly in support.
Could we go back up and see if it can be combined and add both Ms. Keys-Gamarra and Ms. Schultz?
That would be my recommendation if Ms. Schultz is...
Is that all right with you, Ms. Schultz?
I love collaborating with you. I'd be happy to do so on this next step.
All right. And so, does that capture it, Ms. Schultz? Does that include what you were looking for? And let's add Ms. Schultz's name up there as well. And, oh, and then, okay.
Combine five and six.
But if you would please include not just on-time graduation, on-time graduation, disaggregated data, on-time graduation and disaggregated data.
Yes. That's fine. And then we can knock a couple out.
Okay. So, Ms. Darnett Kofax, yours is the next.
Yes. But can you add, break out by fiscal year? And break out by fiscal year.
Talk about CPS on by fiscal year.
Okay. Is everyone all right with that? No problems? Okay. Ms. Corbett Sanders, you have number seven?
It's provide the board with the plan. For getting more student, more students from underrepresented populations into our AP And ensuring their success in their programs, or providing the supports to ensure their success.
All right. Does anyone have any questions about that? Number seven, is that all right with everyone? Okay. Number eight, that's Ms. Corbett Sanders.
Sorry, I do have a question. Do we know that they're underrepresented? Like, do we have that data?
If you look at the report, it shows that they are underrepresented. And so, yes, we do have that data on page, I forget what page it is.
Appendix.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right. Ms. Corbett Sanders, number eight. So, this is the tipping point study. Does that capture what you're looking for on the tipping?
Actually, I would start with expand the recommendations. You just, I'm sorry. Expand the recommendations on page 39 to include wraparound services, increased county supports, and an assessment of a, of the impact of the revised tipping point study.
Did you want reference to the county resources?
I thought county, increased county resources and supports, right there.
Oh, I see. I'm sorry. It was changed. All right. And does that reflect it?
Yes.
All right. Anyone have any questions or concerns about number eight? All right. We'll go on to number nine. Ms. McLaughlin?
So, number nine reflects the last part that was left on, off of the one above, which is when the superintendent's going to bring back recommendations on the metrics that we want this done at a future work session.
Oh, so we should add that up?
So, I think we just need to add future work session to the one above. You've seen delete nine. Go ahead and delete nine, and then just put recommendation to the board. After it says the word board, add a future work session. Is that okay, Dr. Braybrand?
Okay. All right. So, we can go now to 10. Darnett Kofax?
Yeah. I was going to say, I'll add that to Ms. Corbett Sanders' revised tipping point study, which should include best practices for socioeconomic resegregation. Addressing, addressing, yes, for reducing, yes.
Can I ask, like, do you have an example of what you mean by that?
So, so the, the, the study talked more about the student body when it was intensely segregated by race. But I have some schools that are intensely segregated by socioeconomics. And so, those were issues that were addressed in some of the NSBA meetings that I went to when we were, when they were talking about, you know, how can we deal with these achievement gaps?
But what are you anticipating are best practices? I mean, what are, I mean, you're asking them for best practices, but you're obviously anticipating that it's going to include something.
I am not at this point. That's, that's up to the staff to figure out. There have been, I mentioned in my comments what some of the things were, but I would like to hear from staff what their ideas are and what their research indicates.
I would just, I would just ask that there, this seems to me to also have legal implications. And I don't know if we're going to have a legal briefing on this. I mean, if you're talking about kind of reverse busing or some, I mean, I don't understand what's being contemplated by this. I mean, this is very vague. So...
Well, I would say that it's, it's a large topic. And what Ms. Darnett Kofax is asking, and what I would agree with, is we're looking for best practices. Best practices wouldn't include anything that was illegal.
But I, but I don't, I don't understand because there's some school divisions in the country that are almost 100% black or 100% Hispanic. And, and we don't talk about, you know, reshifting things because of the percentages there. So, why would we talk about reshifting them here?
I think, well, I let Ms. Darnett Kofax speak to her. I'll say for myself, we have an issue here. And it was, a problem was identified years ago in the tipping point study. We've had, we certainly have evidence that having huge, huge, huge amounts of poverty in one school does not help the students at that school. It creates more challenges. So, it's something that we're looking to address. We're looking for ideas.
Okay. I'm just going to say, I went to a majority-minority, I went to my first high school here in Fairfax County that was a super-majority, like, super, super, super-majority. And then I finished a high school in San Diego that was majority-minority. And it wasn't, they didn't anticipate changing the population. They just addressed the needs of the population. And we had a very high-performing school. So, I just, you know, I get cautious that we're saying that we need to change something that we're doing other than delivering services to schools. And nobody's really identifying what this best practices are.
Ms. Keys-Gamarra, did you want to speak to that?
Well, I, I think that Ms. Darnett Kofax has identified research that justifies what she's saying. I think it's just a matter of, it's an exploration, and I would support the exploration. I don't think we're making a decision at this point.
Correct.
So, I would suggest that we move on. I'm not sure that we're suggesting all the things that Ms. Schultz is anticipating. So, I don't want to over, I don't want to over...
I'm asking what you're anticipating.
I don't want to over-alert the community without, it doesn't make any, I'm not sure that it's justified. So, I would support the exploration, and we can look at what's necessary based on best practices.
All right. Do we have consensus on this, the way it's written? All right. Shall I, all right. So, number nine, I believe, can be removed then, Ms. Darnett Kofax?
Yes.
Okay. Ms. Keys-Gamarra, you have another one?
I think staff understands what I was saying. I was looking for more of a breakdown per region because I, based on my conversations with people across the county, there may be some disparities. And that may in itself help us to identify some targets or what our concerns are. So, as long as staff understands what I'm saying, I'm good.
All right. Any problems with that? Any questions?
Well, I'm wondering if it's possible just to clarify which metrics we're talking about. Because I wasn't sure if we were talking about page 10, 11 of the report, or of the PowerPoint, which would be different data sets.
It was the one with the tables, not the appendices, not the appendix.
So, you're in the 60-page report, then, page 12 through 14?
Right. It, one of them was algebra, number of kids taking algebra, number of kids taking honors, was on those pages 12 through 14. It's the, yeah.
If, if we could specify algebra participation by the end of eighth grade and honors participation, I think that would be good. Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Should we, let's amend that.
Instead of the page numbers, I think it'd be better to specify the metrics. So, algebra one participation by eighth grade and honors participation.
Yeah. Was al, okay. I'm looking at the page now. It was algebra one participation, proficiency in honors courses, one or more honors courses, percent of students who participate in honors courses. So, yeah, I think we're on the same. And 14 was AP and IB courses.
You mean, do you mean participate, or do you mean pass?
Those, those, yes. Those tables deal specifically with percentage of students who participate. And then the one below is percentage of students who demonstrate proficiency. So, it, each of these tables have specific things that they're addressing. I'm asking for a breakdown per region so that we can see if there are discrepancies.
Well, that's good. Thank you.
Is everyone all right with that? Any problems, questions? All right. We'll go, Ms. Schultz. You have number 10. Does that capture it, Ms. Schultz? Okay.
No. I just, I think that staff needs to gather some information for us. I mean, look, we have 800-plus kids that, at least that we know of, on the waiting list every year.
Okay.
I think we should prioritize four-year-olds. And we don't have the facility space. And you know what that heat map looks like. So, you know, I mean, we can keep doing the same thing and expecting a different result, or we could try something different. or we could try something different.
Does anybody have a problem with this? Ms. Kies-Gamara?
I just have one question. Is there a specific thing that you wanted to focus on? Because I actually like the fact that you mentioned four-year-olds and we know what that heat map looks like. Are you asking that we specifically get that information so that we can tie that to a metric?
I would like staff to do what is necessary, to bring us back some information to see what it would look like to create a public-private partnership to buy up slots in the community because the kids are coming the next year. And if we don't have the spots for them, they're going to, we're either going to spend $25,000 to do three weeks of education for 28, 26 kids, or maybe we spend $25,000 and do 100 kids. I don't, and they get it all year long.
So, Ms. Kies-Gamara, did you have another suggestion or?
I have a suggestion.
I, I was just trying to clarify what she was saying. I, I'm not sure that the answer is buying up the slots, but I, I'd like for there to be a metric to try to figure out how to move toward, we talked already, bridge to kindergarten, but also, this is another option, I think, that Ms. Schultz is
Bridge to kindergarten is, is three weeks.
I understand. And that's the reason I asked for what success rate we saw from that. But I also want, would like to see a metric with respect to achieving the level of preschool for those kids specifically that are on the waiting list.
So, Ms. Kies-Gamara and Ms. Schultz, if you go up to my initial question regarding the heat maps and identifying where the void is in the provision of services, would you like to then combine, Ms. Schultz, your question about public-private partnerships so that it is one full?
No, because I think, I think that, I think they require two different sets of mindsets within the staff. This, this is something, I mean, yes, ultimately to do that, but I think exploring, what would that look like?
So that's exactly what I call for at the top. Look at strategies for eliminating the waitlist. And so if you want to add specifically public-private partnerships, you certainly can. But that was exactly what I was alluding to, is that I want a full range of strategies to address that waitlist.
And if I may add to Ms. Schultz's point, I think there are other public-private partnerships that Maura has actually done a lot of research on. So I'd be supportive of all of those being investigated as part of the solution.
Whatever, whatever you guys want, but I specifically, this is something that specifically I have brought forward repeatedly, and we haven't done it. And guess what? That waitlist hasn't shrunk and those four-year-olds are now eight-year-olds.
So let's, so let's keep this as a separate for, for Ms. Schultz. Let's go down to it. And it, does that, does that capture what you want to do, Ms. Schultz?
I mean, as long as staff understands, it's fine.
Okay. And does anyone have any other questions or comments about this? Are we all all right with that, exploring public-private partnerships? All right. Oh, with that, and that may end up becoming part of the larger piece that Ms. Corbett Sanders has, has asked for. But that's fine. It may be a duplicate, but that's all right. Ms. Schultz, you have the next one? Does everyone understand that? Does staff understand what we're asking for there? Is everyone all right with that?
Yeah.
Okay. Ms. Schultz? College, okay. Everyone all right with that? Mr. Wilson, did you have a comment?
Just, I think that, just to add in, I'd like to see the academic impact of FCPS program as compared also to other high-quality pre-K providers that we already are tracking so that we can see sort of where FCPS's program and then other programs across all the spectrum of different groups that we're looking at.
You're looking for, for success?
Exactly.
Okay. Okay. And I believe that's the last on those. I did have, want to add, if everyone's all right with that, I want to add one more, and it's a simple one, I think it's a simple one. Dr. Presidio, you had brought some data to us about the Hispanic graduation rate without the ELL in it, as well as some information on preschool at the top of our, and I, I would appreciate if you could put that into writing and, and post that.
We'll actually include that information in the data appendix, so we'll update the charts with that additional information.
That would be great. Okay. So that will be part of it. All right. Mr. McElveen, did you have a comment?
I just have a question on 13. How is that measurable? We don't code students based on their private provider.
That's a good question.
Well, that, that's the point I was going to make, is I think we can do a comparison between students who had no preschool, FCPS preschool, or other preschool. But that's the level of detail we could get to.
Yeah, I wasn't suggesting individual providers, just that since we do track that information as part of the initial entrance of the students, and we are, we do track what we consider to be high-quality daycare, I presume. Not every provider is, is deemed the same. I, or is it just?
We don't make that distinction. So we would have, we would have three categories that we probably could report. No preschool, FCPS, county preschool, or other preschool.
Or other.
Okay.
So we need to take out the word "high quality" because we, we're not tracking that.
Yeah, that's right, I suppose.
No preschool, county, FCPS, or?
I guess because in a previous, under a previous superintendent, we were briefed on sort of high-quality pre-K programs, and we gave, we had actually a number of percentage of children, and then we, we swept in and defined sort of what that meant. So I guess I thought maybe you had a little more detail in the data.
All right. And with that, thank you so much, Dr. Presidio and Dr. Zulawaga, wherever he is gone. Thank you so much. And we are going to take a five-minute break, and we do have two more items before we go into close. So thank you.